So, we're gonna start the meeting with a nice swearing in of our new firefighter. So, for those involved, I would like you to please come forward. Town clerk will be working with it. I believe the fire chief will be up. I will do everything I can to hi.
Jared Markowski, he's our newest firefighter down at Station Two of South Barry. He's been with us for a few weeks and he just won't lose track of selecting meeting nights. He joined right after the awards night, so he's best off on that. He's gonna get a swan in tonight in his dash, I believe his weight is about, is it bad done?
She wants him.
Punch it in, that's all.
Alright, you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi Jared, I'm Markowski.
Hi Jared, I'm Markowski.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Town of Barry's Fire Department.
As a member of the Town of Barry's Fire Department.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws, rules, and directives of the Town of Barry.
And the bylaws, rules, and directives of the Town of Barry.
Agreeably into the best of my knowledge and ability.
Agreeably into the best of my knowledge and ability.
In an effort to preserve life
In an effort to preserve life.
And property
And property.
From the elements of fire and disaster.
From the elements of fire and disaster.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Punch it in. Love tap. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Hopefully none of you have to sit here on this tonight, but if you do, we'll let my apple board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, don't leave yet. You've made a request, I believe, to hold muster September 17th, correct?
Uh, yes.
Could you explain to all those that don't understand what holding muster means? Could you give a quick little description of it?
Okay, so, um, yeah, come on up.
Sorry, thank you.
So, the Barry Fire Association would like to hold a muster, um, which is an event in which we bring in a bunch of towns from the surrounding areas, fire departments, and their fire associations. They bring a group of firefighters and we perform events, um, such as hydrant dressing or hose relays, events like this, and, uh, they'll do it in team fashion and they'll race for time. Um, and we'd like to start the event with a parade, starting at Quavon, going up to the center of town, and, uh, doing this event during the day. And it would just, uh, what we're looking to do, or when you guys is just permission to block off, uh, I guess it's Hart Street in front of the Congressional Church, and then the bottom of Broad Street where the muster will take place. It'll take place right in front of Kena.
Okay. Does that coincide with the Business Committee Barry event? I know they pushed something to September. And I can't recall even where they were. Do you remember, Chris?
Yeah, we did, let me check. February 15th.
Okay. Alright. Is this a daytime event for you guys usually?
Uh, yes.
I would guess so.
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, usually the parade starts at 11:00.
Okay.
And then, uh, the muster will follow right after it.
Alright.
We start the muster, it'll probably be done off the common by 4:00.
Oh, I got you. I'm just thinking, you know, we'd all love to see it. But Tuesday's a Tuesday thing and then sometimes we can, sometimes we can't, so that's why I was just...
This is something we did for many, many years. I think the last one we did in town was maybe 1992. Uh, but this is something that we were doing for 34 years.
I'd love to see it come back.
I have touched base with the police chief and he was pretty happy about the idea and everything, so...
Okay. Alright. No, I appreciate it, that, I just didn't realize Tuesday. I was like, "Oh, this is usually a Saturday. The whole town's gonna come out to try to see everybody doing it."
It is gonna be, I didn't...
It'll be, yes, it'll be a Saturday, August 17th.
No, August.
August 17th.
That probably makes it much more a weekend. I'm looking at September here and saying, "That's a Tuesday."
No, that was August 17th.
Yep.
Perfect. I'm all for it, so I guess, uh, thank you very much for clarifying to those.
Do you guys want to, you want us to have the liability policy for that, say, or?
Cause I can't speak.
If you could follow up with Andrew, uh, we'll look at some of the standard rules and what rules we may or may not waive based on it being a town department versus a private entity.
Okay.
Obviously, you're already working with the police chief. I'd suggest continue with that. If anybody's coming to help support it with, like, vending, they may have to run through the Board of Health to make sure they have the right to sell food.
Yeah, okay. Uh, one other thing, unfortunately, I apologize for being late. I just gotta work. The association will be selling Hamburgs up there.
Okay.
Just to make money for the association. So, I believe, Board of Health will probably have to get a, uh, Monday afternoon.
I think that's what you'll need. Depending on how you're cooking, you may need your own chief to say it's okay to cook the way you're choosing to cook. So, uh, yeah, I would just go through Andrew, just to make sure we do the double checks 'cause any board may have a feeling like they have a voice in this and I wouldn't want to overlook that.
Okay.
But I think it should be standard.
Don't want it, don't want it stacked.
You got my full support. I think it's easily managed, whatever it is you're asking.
Soon, soon there's something to go through with it.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You got it. Um, do we wanna make a motion, or do you wanna wait?
I'm part of the association as well, so I'll refrain from that.
Dylan, would you, are you interested in making a motion on that?
Sure. Uh, I move that we, uh, carry on with their application.
Alright. Well, second, let them finish the application. If any boards or someone come back with questions or concerns, we'll get back to them just to make sure it's right. I don't necessarily see our board holding up. We're just gonna help enforce another board if they have something to say and they find there's not easy answers.
Okay.
So, yes, we await you coming back saying, "We're done. We're good to go."
Thanks, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you much. I guess technically, let's call for a vote on that. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Agreed. Um, okay. So, boom, done, boom, done. We'll do it.
Well, as good as out of here, look at that.
Trails Committee. Come on up.
Alright.
Tell us what you wanna tell us.
Alright, I've got a handout here.
You have a big one, thank you.
Thank you.
Just enough, yeah. Here tonight to propose the building and maintenance of existing trails that exist on town-owned property known as Town Farm Hill. Uh, it's a property that, as far as I know, has been town-owned for as long as I've been in this town and I'm a lifelong resident, and...
So far.
Yeah, it's, uh, but it's, it's basically a pretty widespread area that is close to the center of town that I feel could really help promote the town by bringing the focus of health and fitness to the town, uh, to promote outdoor recreation for both adults and youth. And we feel that the Town Farm property would be well-suited to host such trails. Currently, the property does, uh, is made up of quite a few old or abandoned ATV, old dirt bike trails that have been there for years. Uh, our, part of our proposal is we'd like to clean them up. Property is also kinda littered and may possibly be some squatters living on the top of the hill, possibly, or at least did at some point. There's some remnants of a tent and, like, tops and all kinds of stuff up there. Uh, this located, uh, not too far from where the cell phone tower is, located on top of the hill. Our plan, which is spelled out in that handout there, does show a map that, uh, is showing the existing trails that exist now, and our plan would be to utilize a lot of those existing trails, but also, uh, expand on them with a low-impact, single-track type trail system that would be, uh, able to utilize the land better, maybe hit some of the better parts of the property. Uh, there's an old town dump that's up there as well, but I think is still currently used by the DPW, I think just to dump, like, uh, tree limbs and different yard, uh, different roadside cleanup waste. Uh, it's no longer, obviously, disposing of trash, but it still looks like there's piles of wood up there and woodchips and whatnot. Our plan would be to not, uh, intrude on that at all. We wouldn't be anywhere near that area. It would run up along the side of Route 122, up along, uh, Town Farm Road, and kinda circle around. You can see the dotted line there is what I would propose to be built. The solid line is existing trail that does exit the town property and go onto private land, so as you can see, I've proposed a trail that would bypass that, so we would stay on town property. If this all went forward and went well, I guess in the future, we would consider approaching the landowners to see if they would allow, uh, public use of their privately-owned land, but that would be something I think we'd look to avoid initially at least, which is stay on town property. That particular parcel of land also does, uh, abut the senior center, which would be on South Barry Road. I've hiked the property several times and I think it would possibly be, uh, we'd be able to incorporate access to this trail system from the senior center on town property, uh, staying on town property, and possibly, uh, include a entry-level or senior ability level hiking trail to, again, encourage outdoor recreation. The hillside that is behind the senior center is quite steep and obviously with, uh, older folks wanting to get out for a hike, steep terrain maybe isn't the best, but I did hike it. It looks like it's something we could work with and maybe just do a, a small loop there. As you can see, I have down at the bottom there, just a small loop proposed there that does stay on town property.
Okay.
Many benefits, as I listed in the proposal there, you know, primarily on the health side of things and better utilization of the land. As I said, now, it's kind of old abandoned farm property and I think it could be much better used for outdoor recreation, which could potentially encourage people to come to the Town of Barry for that, maybe visit our restaurants, our local retail stores.
Okay.
Off Route 122, there is a small parking area at the end of Wildwood Drive, which our Barry Trails group has, we actually held one of our meetings there one evening, and we parked there and accessed the property from, uh, that small parking area. So, our plan would like to include, uh, working with that parking area a little bit and maybe putting up some signage and some trail maps, just to have people know where they're going once they get in there. Can you see on that map there where Route 122 is?
Yeah. The B?
Yep, exactly. Wildwood Drive is right here. There's a small little, I don't know if you, if you travel down Route 122 headed towards the OCAM direction, there is a small little turnoff there.
Okay.
We were able to park, I think, about six or eight vehicles there for our Trails Group meeting, and then we went in and proceeded to hike the, the property.
Okay.
Again, we'd like to put a sign there, uh, that would let people know what we're doing, first of all, and maybe a map that would, uh, that they could take with them on their hike, or bike, or whatever they chose to do. Isn't there water in here down on this lower end, down past Wildwood we cut across? The wet man's are actually... Yeah, there is. When you are further south of where I'm proposing to have the parking area, further south there, uh, where it heads towards Nichols Road, there is a wet section in there, which... This is Nichols Road here, I assume? Uh, yeah, it's on there. I think, I think that is, yes. It should be Nichols, and it, it is, there is water back in here, I just didn't know far back in. Doesn't go very far back in. It, it does go in a little ways, further than you can see from the road, but if you see on the map, we've kinda stayed out of that area right here, which this is the area that's kinda wet and much. Further into Nichols has water, I know, in this side. On that side. The other side here is, is quite dry. Okay. We would, obviously... I haven't been up in there much, so I just...
The Ware River?
Ware River runs on the other side of Nichols.
That's what that is.
Yes, over this side, yes, border over this side, and it's down, um... Our plan would be in these, the, the trail proposed, you know, the, the marked trails that I have proposed there, I mean, they're not set in stone that that's exact GPS location of where they're gonna be. Uh, our goal with this would be to have low impact and to stay out of any wetlands, so if there's a wetland that would require, you know, filling in or anything like that, we're not gonna go there. We're just gonna route the trails around it and bypass it. I mean, there may be some small, uh, like little string crossings or something that we would build a bridge to get over, but they would just be very non-intrusive, just very low impact.
So, you'd go before the Conservation Commission to confirm your location meets their concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, we, we wouldn't plan to have any substantial impact, if any, at all. Where are we with the, um, Open Space Committee we're talking about? Cause this is right up that alley.
Would we have one or two applications to be on the board?
We have three, including, uh, Charlie Chase. We need four to constitute a quorum, so we still need one, to at least get that going.
I'd love to see...
Do you wanna barter with the Trail Committee to see if they wanna jump on that? They can...
I was gonna say, I would like to see this addressed by the Open Space Committee, but it is short of a member.
Gotcha.
What a shame. I'd love to see that go forward, too.
Yeah.
But this is exactly what that Open Space Committee is supposed to be about, so it might be a good thing to think about anyways. It would give you more insight to other pieces of land like this in town, because this is the kinda thing we wanna see in the open space. Multi-use, we're talking, getting the seniors involved, biking trails, hiking trails. It's gonna hit young children, um, and anyone else middle-aged who wants to walk, and seniors who wanna get out there. This is exactly what we're talking about for open space and having the committee to look for. I like it and I'm in favor of it, but of course, my, like I said, my concerns for wetlands, when anytime you even cross a brook, they're gonna have say over how you do it. If you do it without asking, it won't be received well.
Right.
If you ask, it'll probably be very simple, as you said, to, to do the crossing. But I would highly encourage you to consider, if you would, consider looking into the Open Space Committee, because this, this would fit very well with the type of thing you're doing.
Sure. Well, in the future, it's definitely something I would consider.
There's many other pieces in town, too, that would have things like... Right, and our goal with this recently-formed Barry Trails Group is to possibly expand on, uh, this type of projects and activities. Um, so, whether our group would merge into the Open Space Committee, I don't know. I wasn't aware of such a committee, but I'm new to this, so...
Is this a private group that came together and call yourselves the Barry Trail Committee?
I guess you would say that, but we do meet here in this building. We meet once a month.
But there's no town sanctioning creation of this committee?
No, this was, uh, Eddie Yaglu had approached us for use of the building a few months ago.
Okay, I remember something, okay.
About the use of this building for that, that's, that's same, it's the same group.
So, should we be considering as a group, cause there's about eight of us that are, eight or 10 of us that are pretty active on the group. I mean, we meet once a month, we've hiked the property, we, good ideas, you know, we kinda wanna try to do something here. Does it make sense to have a Barry Trails Group or Committee, or whatever we call ourselves, and an Open Space Committee, or should this kinda be... Pros and cons. If, if, once you make an official committee, you're gonna have to uphold, uh, open meeting laws and, uh, put constraints on how you can meet and what you can do, is you restrict yourself. On the other hand, it may open up grants and other possible funding and assistance, um, to do it that way, so that's something you'd have to weigh, but the, the Open Space Committee already has that.
Gotcha.
So, having a separate committee and joining that committee, you might get the best of both worlds, that's why I suggested.
Sure.
You know, there's so many trails up near the old prison camps and up, uh, to Barry Falls Dam, of course, which link to the, um, Frisbee Disc Golf up there, and, um, there's, and there's trails out on that side of town that still are stone-built trails and not utilized much in the summertime because they're not allowed to be by motorized vehicles. A lot of possibilities in the town that this would fit well with, so...
I think it could be something that helps bring, you know, recreation to the town, get us maybe known as a town, it promotes recreation and help their activities.
Absolutely.
That's kind of our thought.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that the same property that Andrew's looking into regarding sealing the dump with some funding and putting solar facilities?
It surrounds that property. It's not necessarily going through that property, or the portion that we've identified, based on the way this was laid out. It looks like his proposed track isn't going through the area that...
If it did, I'm sure you could avoid it.
The dump and the cell towers here, and it seems like he's keeping the trail downhill and away, but...
The dump is in seen, well, in the spring it was within seen distance. Now that foliage is all grown in, we would be staying... There's water tanks up there as well, though.
And I wonder whether there could be some symbiosis with the Trails Committee and the income generating of the, of the solar facility. If that connection could be made well, maybe that would put Barry on the map even more than it is, because we were able to blend that, those two somewhat dissimilar directions into one, and it might work out to be a wonderful project.
Great idea for the future, but let's address this one for today and get this moving, if we could.
I do understand, though, the concept of it's something we should factor in.
Right, and that's...
I, I guess...
Once they're established, it's easier to try to merge things and find, you know, we have an established use and bring, and bring the solar towards that and in on that. If there was a proposed plan, obviously, we would work around with that, you know, as long as it still makes sense to move forward with the project, uh, in conjunction with that. Ready for motion? Sure. I'll make a motion that we accept their proposal and move forward with it, assuming they're gonna go through with the Board of Health and, um, not the Board of Health, pardon me, the Conservation Committee, to make sure that we don't have issues with wetlands and such. And, but probably like to see a more finalized plan before we start construction, but otherwise, um, I suggest we give them permission to move forward with, with the request.
Do I have a second?
Yep, I second that motion.
Further discussion? Yes, all I would ask is that you come back before the board, before you start doing anything to actually create the trails?
Yep.
And that way, we can make sure we're just still working together, not against each other, in case we do pursue solar or other things with that site, that all of a sudden you're doing one thing and we're not paying attention and we're conflicting.
Makes sense. This would involve quite a bit of labor and time on our group, so we certainly don't wanna, uh, go through that and then have it turn out that the solar's gonna be put in there, so... We, we should add the caveat that if any other groups zoning or planning have any requests to make any insight on this, we'd have to entertain that as well, so we're not excluding them, but at this point, I don't see the need. Um, but if they do have input, we'd certainly come back to you with their requirements, um, as we go. That would be before the final approval. Yep, and we'll offer the Conservation maybe a walkthrough of the property once we get more of a finalized, uh, map of exactly where these trails are intended to be put, and we'll get off and we'll walk through, and then we'll, again, present you with a final plan. Take 'em up that steep terrain.
Well, another thing I would request is, after the meeting, reach out to Andrew. This being town property, we need to better understand the liabilities that are involved and how you make sure that we are not liable if somebody breaks their ankle on a trail that's been created.
Right.
I don't know the rules, so I don't wanna assume there's no liability in Massachusetts.
Right, okay. That's something I'm not familiar with. Uh, I obviously did think about that, uh, but my thoughts were that, obviously, there's a lot of town property that we spend time on, uh, from the common to anywhere, which I guess somebody hiking or biking across the common technically could, uh, twist their ankle. I think that's more... I don't know how different this would be, I'm not sure, but where would we go to find that?
I completely agree.
I think that's more...
I would start with Andrew.
I think that's more...
Well, we can't approve it if all of a sudden we get response back saying, "This is a, not a good idea."
Right.
Why keep chasing...
But I mean, I...
I'm assuming, though, with, Andrew can talk to DCR, and DCR can tell us how the state handles it, and probably tell us how they would recommend a local community to do it, or you could do the same, and we'd understand how generally liability is when you advertise a path for the common public to use.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, Andrew, I can get in touch with you on that.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, alright? Sounds good.
So, call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then I would encourage you to spread the word with your other Trail Committee members, uh, to discuss who might wanna jump on the Open Space Committee, because it sounds like if we get one more person, we can actually hold a quorum and begin that process.
And they may be able to help with stuff for this.
Yeah, right, that makes sense. I appreciate that suggestion.
They get the ability to get funding and grants, which would, could put money towards something exactly.
I think there is quite a bit of that out there available for this type of stuff.
And for those, and that, that's part of why we set that committee in motion, and if we get the committee up and running, those things are available, and that could benefit, obviously, this would be a great way to say we have a, a place to use the first grant money that they could get.
Yep, absolutely.
I'd highly recommend looking into it, so that group can get functioning.
Alright, will do.
Thank you very much, again. Much appreciated for you taking the time and effort.
You bet, thank you. Have a good night.
Nice. Nice when things fit together. That's the perfect time for that. Open Space, it's definitely gonna get grant money in, that could really take the burden off, and more stuff like that. Yeah, yeah.
For everybody to know it's there. Um, alright, let's do a quick thing on the Red Tomato Pizza license transfer update. Could you clarify what this, I saw the letter, I didn't understand it.
Yeah, they basically, um, the ABCC had kicked back, um, their land, the Red Tomato's last transfer, uh, requests, were requesting additional information. Um, they just submitted that, of the information that was outstanding, but needs the board's sign up in order to go back to ABCC for reconsideration. Basically, query request and stuff.
Some of the, it wasn't a complete application, is generally what you're saying?
Right.
I'm okay for them to try again. Sounds like that's really what this is, is giving them an option to go before the state again and...
And by the way, the food's good.
Is it?
Yeah.
Good. I'm on a low-carb diet. I don't go to a lot of pizza places where I eat the crust. And I found one where I scraped the toppings off, and that gets me through on an emergency crunch when I have no time at home.
I, I didn't have pizza, I had, I had the regular meals.
It's just, it's just request for it.
Is it breaded?
Well, they have, they have...
Oh, see, see, you're not, you're not really keto if you're not paying attention to the breading on your food.
They have different types of chicken. I really don't know the menu.
No, I'm just joking.
But, but I went, I, I needed some food. I had never been in there, and I looked at the menu, and I, I didn't want a pizza, so it was very good.
No, don't get me wrong.
And I'm not part of the business.
I'm not questioning the quality of their food, I just realize that I don't look at those with the same yearning I used to.
I don't like breaded chicken.
I used to love every pizza place for everything they offered. And then I changed my mind and I realized that I actually could lose weight if I quit eating like a pig. I didn't do well, but I'm doing better.
We can get it approved, and then we can sign it.
So, any further questions on the transfer? Okay, I'd make a motion that we, uh, accept the request as stated.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. This is the one to sign?
Yes.
Save my weary hand of all the signatures. Is it only one sheet? Just the top sheet?
Just the top sheet, yep.
And then when you're done, we'll send it back to Greg. Okay, now we're going to, if you're okay with it, I'd like to push the administrative stuff to the end, because I got a feeling most everybody else left here, unless I'm wrong, is here for either the town meeting warrant. Am I wrong? Is somebody here for another agenda item that I'm missing? Yes, Mary Jane?
Senator Jim, it's, uh, public comment.
Alright, what's your public comment?
I guess, oh, um...
Yep.
Around town?
I've seen them, yes.
I thought it was an interesting article.
134.
My article. At 25.
This is 13.
Yep.
It says, hook it up, Etch A Town's court, places to play abound. It says, hook it up, and your towns court, places to play abound. In Jacoby, Munson, South Hadley, Holyoke, Wilberham, Amherst. Felton Town, Hampton. I was wondering why Berry Plains, Ronnie Park. Ice Park, Felton Field. Was not in it.
Looking at the publisher of this.
Turley's, it was actually very.
It's, whether submits goes in that one. Oh, okay.
So it comes down to somebody taking the time to bring it to Turley Publications' attention to see what criteria fits, what gets published.
Okay, because we have some nice parks and they have fences.
Yep.
And, um, they have hoops. Maybe they need a little bit of netting up on High Plains that we could take from Felton Fields grants, maybe?
We can look at that. We can also look at the Parks and Recs Committee. They can kind of review the budget they're given, figure out where to apply the money.
Okay, because Trafalgar Square is not a through street, but we have a hoop there. And I was wondering if perhaps we can do something about that on my article.
I think we should take that under consideration. I know that tomorrow we're also discussing that, so it'll be a first continued.
And my other thirty seconds, if I could, um, how would I go about changing, make an amendment to the amendment of my article tomorrow?
If you'd like to motion the wording and change the wording to it, is that what you're saying? You'd like to change what the citizen's petition got you on the warrant for?
Yes, I want to make an amendment to that.
You have to propose the bylaw the way it's written, the way you got your citizen's petition to get you on the warrant.
Okay.
And then after that, when discussion opens, you would make a motion to revise it.
Gotcha.
I would be prepared with a written, so you're just reading your motion, so you're not trying to think of it at the moment. So kind of rewrite it and be ready to say, here is the proposed motion. Further consideration, I'd like to make a motion to amend this as.
Okay, after I read it?
Right, you have to read it as it's written.
Joshua Smith, then I read it, and then I.
You read it as it's written, and that introduces your motion. Then we begin discussion. You say, I'd like to make a motion to amend my motion to read as follows.
Okay.
And then you'll read your new, I would like it to read as follows and read it the other way. And then they can make a vote on accepting your amendment, and then they can move on later to vote on that. So once you open it, ask to amend it and read that then.
Before they vote on it?
Right, during discussion phase. You must read the original first.
Yes.
And feel free to try to reach out to the moderator or to someone else prior to the meeting.
So they know what's going on.
Josh Smith, and he may also help you to make sure you get your wording right. It'll just help you when you stand in front of everybody to feel more confident of, this is what I got to say.
He may entertain reading the proposed amendment to you if you say, I propose an amendment, and the moderator, if you would agree to, might read it for you and reread it. I doubt it, but maybe. Might make it go quicker. Could ask.
If you can get ahold of the moderator prior to the meeting, he'll be at the building, I'm sure, early enough. You may ask him just to clarify this process with him again because even if we gave you bad advice, he will correct you on the floor. So try to see if he can help you so he doesn't have to correct you on the floor later. That's all.
No, no, he won't want to see that.
Just, just talk to him and he'll let you know how to do it.
It's done.
Since we opened public comment, is there any other further public comment? All right, I'm, would like to raise a new agenda item. The recommendations for the fiscal year twenty town meeting warrant articles. The Finance Committee has already gone through and done their recommendations of every article, budget through bylaw. And it is now our turn to do it. And so, we have a copy of the annual town meeting booklet. Does this got the updated planning board bylaw? Okay. What I am going to propose to do here, and you guys may get really tired. But we're going to go one at a time, write through it. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible in the beginning, but if somebody thinks more discussion or clarification is required, we can open it to further discussion. But right now, it's almost I'm going to name it by title, and the three of us are going to vote. I don't want to get into a lotted discussion unless somebody raises their hand. If I can help it. Okay. Discussion will be had. Don't get me wrong. I'm not going to say nobody can talk. It's just. Only say something that hasn't already been said. All right, Article One, choose town officers. Any questions? All right. If you guys don't mind, I would just like to ask for questions. If you guys don't offer questions, I'm just going to ask for a vote. So the motion would be to go through all of this and vote individually. Do I have a second on that? So I don't have to say motion and second every time.
Yeah, I'll second that. We'll do them. I was going to say do a group of these, but we'll do them individually, sure.
That sounds good. It sounded like he was thinking, so I was giving him some time.
Yeah, I was thinking we group a bunch together, but for this, we'll just do one by one.
And we call for a vote on that process thing I just asked. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I seconded that.
It's done. Article One, choose town officers. Any discussion on what this means or what you would, yes, Mr. Grabus? If you, okay, yes. I had a nice copy till I broke it.
Yeah, you can have this one.
I was about to offer, and then I was like, Andrew's up and going already, so that's fine. Call for vote, Article One?
Aye, favorable.
Aye.
Aye.
And, so we just say aye is favorable?
Yes.
And nay is not?
Yes, all votes will be based on whether it's a favorable vote. So ayes mean favorable, nays mean unfavorable.
And for no recommendation, you say abstain in this case?
Yes, so exactly. If you're not in favor or against it, say the word abstain, and that's it. Yes, sir. Oh, you were just asking for a copy. Now, these booklets are not changing for tomorrow, so if you feel like bringing it tomorrow.
Save as a publication.
Not that it matters. They've already been printed. I'm just bringing it up. Article Two, reports from committees. Any questions or discussion on this? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Three, Chapter Ninety Grant. Any questions on this item? No? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Four, treasure collector borrowing. Any questions on this item? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Five, revolving funds. Any questions on this or the breakdown thereof? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Six, peg access and cable-related funds. Any questions on this article? No? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Seven, MGL Chapter Two Six Eight, Section Twenty One A. This is where the Board of Assessors identify one of their own as a working assessor. Any questions on that? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Eight, Board of Assessors' property valuation. Any questions on this? No? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Nine, Two Thousand FY Nineteen Snow Removal Overtime Part-Time Account. This is a prior-year funding mechanism to deal with the overages. Any further questions on that? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Ten, FY Nineteen Snow Removal Expense Account. This is more about the materials, but the same concept. Any questions? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Eleven, Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is a request to fund those things that are not just your retirement check. Any questions on this? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Twelve, Police Administration Vehicle. Yes, sir.
I have a question. Why do the police need a pickup truck?
My understanding is they are choosing a pickup truck as one of their cruisers because it could be useful in helping them transport, transport either mountain bikes that they use for certain event security, as well as it may be more converted to the potential canine?
And for barriers.
For barriers, moving the road barriers back and forth. So they bring the road barriers, so pickup works better than either the SUV or the cruisers they've done traditionally.
And they often use a DPW now, which means we bring guys in at overtime to move stuff around for them.
Part Two is that they want a dog to supposedly sniff the lockers of Quavens or something. We had a dog with Mandy. What happened to that? We just had to take it to Namchuk two days a week to train it. We had a dirt bike. They had a trailer. And you say it's like a pedal. We paid a lot of money or spent a lot of time and money for that other dog.
The quad, the quad actually got reverted to the fire departments, used for brush fires and things, so that's still in town use because the police didn't really use it much except for the events of it. The dogs, I believe, have only a couple of year, like five-year life anyways for usefulness, so that would be long gone by now. That was probably nine, ten years ago. They hasn't been continued since. But the pickup truck, yeah, I mean, just obviously where we live, a lot of us own pickup trucks. Just you want to get in the woods and get places, and they have to go to these places, and they have nothing like that yet. So it's, I think it's a smart choice for them to pick up, actually, in my opinion.
Okay. Any further questions? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Police service weapon replacement. Any questions? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Fourteen, DPW Street Sweeper. Any questions on this item? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Fifteen, DPW Lawn Mower. Any questions on this item? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Sixteen, Fire Department Engine Four Equipment. Any questions on this item? Call for vote?
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye. Article Seventeen, Felton Field Improvements. Any questions on this item? Yes, sir.
What does that entail?
It's, from my understanding to date, I think it may be growing, but originally the plan was along Coldbrook Road. Is that technically where it is, right? Along Coldbrook Road, kind of their, their frontage. There are several pine trees. They were taken down. They're going to kind of refinish the whole area to create better just-off street parking right there. I think they want to add like a railing or something to kind of clean up the barrier between the park and that. So it's more of like, as far as I understand at the moment, a curb appeal and more usefulness at the street side. But that's all I've heard to date. I think it's grown a little. Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, so they approached the Finance Committee the other night, and I believe they're going to come prepared to the town meeting tomorrow with a way to spend that money and what their plans are to do with it.
Okay.
And I'd like to add that when they came before the board last year, we just talked about the fact that Four H is, is beginning to use Felton Field and wants to make a home of this. And they're going to, they intend to invest money in structures and other things down there. And we're, we're trying to make sure that we invest along with Four H, so that they would stay here and hopefully invest more in this in the future, so. Part of why we've recommended going along and helping them out with it. Now, you have one more?
Yes, Mayor James.
If I could just ask, was any mention of the tennis courts or the basketball courts at Felton?
There was definitely talk of it, yes.
There was no finalization about it?
Tomorrow night, you'll hear more.
Correct.
Oh.
The Felton Field Commission will present more of the plan at the meeting tomorrow night. I just know the generic, and I'm kind of letting the commission kind of run with it as they proposed it at the moment. That's my position. Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Ruggles Lane PA System Replacement, Article Eighteen. Any questions on this?
This is a modified number, correct, from the first request because they dropped it. They said they had part of repaired. I just want to point that out. This is a reduction from what they first came for us with.
Is it?
Yes, they first requested thirty thousand. We're able to use the telephone funds for the fifteen, to replace the telephone aspect of it. So now they're just looking for the funding to replace the PA, the PA function.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Any further questions? Comments? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Ruggles Lane Dishwasher Repair, Article Nineteen. Any questions on this? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Well, Choose It Greenways. Any questions on this item? Call for vote?
Aye.
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 Article Twenty One, the Omnibus Budget. I actually apologize, but I really hope that nobody has questions on this because it's way too broken down tonight. I'm just going to call for a vote tonight. This is the big budget that includes every department breakdown. And we pretty much defer to the Finance Committee to work through that. That's their role in the town, so they recommended it, so. I'll leak, other Board of Assemblymen can open themselves up if they want, but I think this would be a long discussion where I could provide very little to help with the answers you're looking for. Yes, Mayor James.
Is there a number figure for the budget that you voted on, or they voted on?
Yes, it's in this pack, this report. The whole budget is. Do we have a, where's, do we have a? The number?
Is that page nineteen?
Eleven million, five hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety.
There you go.
I have one caveat to this entire omnibus.
Eleven, five fifty-five.
And that's the Quavens.
Uh-huh, seven ninety.
I want to go and record as unfavorable for the requested number.
Okay.
It's starkly different from what we asked for at one point four. Hubbardson's come back and agreed they can make.
Can you speak a little louder?
All right, let me clarify this. As if you do have a copy of this, some of you don't. Finance Committee did break down each department and made recommendations that are more just to be given, so it'll be given at town meeting. Tonight, though, I would agree with Greg. We'll make the recommendation of the overall omnibus budget, but I know there are questions about the QRSD school budget. So I'm willing to open that up to a separate vote if the board is interested in separating that tonight.
I would like that. Seems fair.
So let's set this vote for the omnibus budget, omnibus budget excluding Quavens Regional School District line items.
Right, the debt relief can stay.
Okay.
That's standard practice.
So any questions on this? Call for vote?
Any questions on this with the exclusion of the Quavens?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. So, next one would be specific to the Quavens Regional School District. Operating budget, not their debt service. That was kind of rolled into the previous vote we just had. And it's kind of locked in as it is anyway. It's not a big debatable thing.
You're talking about that five million dollar.
Yep, page nineteen.
Yes. Specifically, we are talking about the Quavens Regional School District, five million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-dollar line item, which shows a four percent increase to the town of Barry from last year. Just want to put it out there, we have reached out to the other member towns. Three of the other four towns are already proposing lower budgets than the assessed value that Quavens Regional School District had requested that is in our budget. So we already know three towns are not even offering to their people what we're, what we were willing to accept. Hubbardson got hit harder because they have a, their, um, five-year valuation for their town occurred prior to this budget, which by their town valuation being higher. it moved, the assessment is based on your town valuation as well as the members from your town participating in the school. The town valuation now, they jumped because the assessment with the state was due, and so all of their property went up. So not only was the assessment increased based on just students moving about, they get harder. So they're getting hit with almost a seven percent increase with the number that was in our budget.
Oh, state, yeah.
With six point seven based on this assessment, and they were saying six is like as high as they can go. So the point is, we are aware that three of the five towns currently do not support the budget or the assessment that was presented to them. It takes a minimum of three of the five towns to pass it and push the other towns into compliance. I would make a recommendation that we accept it, not because you necessarily agree or disagree with the number, but because if we tried to bring it down, and then it goes to state arbitration, whatever comes from it, we have to come back and vote on it again anyway if it goes back up. If we vote on it, and the other three towns push the arbitration process and it all happens, we don't have to vote again. We just get whatever the lower number it ends up. I do believe we can continue to work with them to better understand why there are those questions about why are we spending money here or there? And is it overinflated in one area versus another, and is it due to state regulations that force that, or is it due to just the superintendent or the school committee's choice of where they put it? There's more to it than that, and I don't have enough to discuss it right now. But I would suggest that we move forward with the line item that is here, so we don't have to repeat it later, no matter what happens when we leave the meeting and continue to discuss with the other towns in the Quavon Regional to see where they're gonna land with that final number. Otherwise, we've got to go before the town again. Yes, sir.
If, if this town approves, just to facilitate the process, is it not going to give the other towns a, a bad impression that we're not trying to follow suit and support them in their lower number? Because earlier at another meeting, Selectman O'Sullivan said, number one, the number of students have gone down, the quality of education has gone down, yet the money has gone up. So I'm under the impression that if we say yes, the other towns are gonna say, we don't have a choice. Unless we know that the other towns are gonna be firm and they refuse that.
Okay, can I answer that?
I don't want to get Barry into a jam because we try to be smart.
No, I got you, and I would like to clarify a little bit of what I was saying and what the real intent here is, and why I'm suggesting we pass the line item that's here. And then I definitely will give you the floor, because I know you've got a lot to say on this. I'm not trying to cut you off or... I'm just trying to clarify what I was saying. My recommendation to vote on this line item currently is not because I necessarily support the number presented at the moment. It's because I don't want to have to repeat, repeat the vote despite the fact, I already know there's three other towns that I do support their concern with their budgets, and I still want to continue the discussion with QRSD and see what we can do to help with that. So I'm not trying to create a public statement of I don't care about my neighbors. What I'm trying to do is make it so we don't have to repeat it while we continue to talk to QRSD and find out what we can do to make it better. Because historically, I think there's a fine balance. We did it with the ambulance. I don't recall, know if you remember, but when we rolled that into the fire department for the first year, there was a very, there was a lot of hesitance about investing in the ambulance department. And it took us a while to actually support the fact that we had to pay for full-time paramedics that could do twenty-four-seven and pay for the EMTs. But since then, we've actually reduced the money coming out of tax levy to support the ambulance because the revenues came into that line that actually offset the additional costs more than the previous budget did. Sometimes schools are very same. If you cut money, you cut their ability to increase their enrollment, and you start to bring it down, even if in your mind you're thinking we need more efficient expenditure. You can't just cut it. You've got to find where that expenditure can properly be reapplied and not lose kind of your, your base, your enrollment. It's a, it's a fine balance, and the more I get into it, the more I realize I don't know enough to say if they're spending the money wisely, because I don't understand the box they're forced to work in. I've been trying to learn more and more, and the more I learn, the more I realize... Well, personally, I believe the state has made this an impossible situation. And I do put it on the state, a hundred percent. And so it, it puts our school committee and our administration, our school district administration in a very tough spot. I'm not saying that they're a hundred percent wisely spending the money, but I am saying that I can't tell you they are or are not. I need to learn a lot more before I can state that. But I'd like to give Greg an opportunity to speak now.
Certainly, thank you. I've kept this much simpler, much, much more streamlined. Um, they take almost six cents on the dollar, uh, six cents out of dimes, six dollars out of ten, sixty cents out of a dollar, but sixty percent of our budget. That means that every dollar, every six dollars a school gets, the fire department, police department, administrative building, town assessors, town collectors, DPW, water sewer, everything else that makes this town run gets four dollars for every six that the school gets. That's very disproportionate, and this is why our town struggles over funding vehicles and, and building repairs and such like that, a new dishwasher for the, for the Ruggles Lane. We struggle with these because of the giant number the school gets, and they've got increases for multiple years without their performance stepping up to their increases. That being said, we've had a discussion here, um, with the other towns. We've, we've all had discussions over the years as the budget, how we can get them to reduce their budget. Um, I personally have felt that the school committee represents the school and bargains with the towns on behalf of the school. In, in my opinion of what the school committee is for, is they are the towns' representatives to bargain on our behalf with the school, and I think their role is reversed right now. And I think instead of doing the best they can for this town and getting the best education we can for the, for the least money that we can do and what we can really afford, they're just trying to beat the town up for as much money as they can get to give the school whatever it wants. And I think that's really putting the cart before the horse. We had a, um, fellow town Hubbardson looked into this. They're having problems with it, and they looked at the budget and put a lot of time into that, and recommended a school at one point four percent increase in their budget, which would hit the towns all at affordable increases, all of the towns. They asked that the other towns support this. We sat there at, at a meeting, we did support this number. And as a board, we have requested that number. Since then, Hubbardson has reevaluated, seen where they can come up with some other funds, and they said they could get a high, as high as a one point five eight percent increase in the school and make it work without really damaging them. So I, I would not stick to the one point four request, but I would still rather see the school at one point five eight. And I am of a mind to make a motion to the town floor to amend their budget amount to that on floor and give the town a chance to vote on that dollar amount rather than the school's dollar amount. That, that motion to amend their budget may be shot down on the town floor, or it may be accepted and voted on by the town. But I intend to give the town an opportunity to vote on the budget that makes sense for the towns that are involved, for the five town administrators that have been communicating on this and trying to do what works best for us. To that end, when this town establishes its budget, we basically have a restriction for where we can go with taxes, which is proposition two and a half. We can do a two and a half percent increase in, in the tax. That doesn't mean two and a half on your home. The fact is, we can only tax the value of your property by two and a half percent total, ever. When we get to that rate, it caps. We're currently s- one point seven? But in that ballpark now, it's sixteen to eighteen dollars per thousand. So we could change on a hundred thousand dollar loan if we're at one point eight percent. The most we could change someone's taxes is like seventy dollars in the year. It's not a huge swing. But if we put that into our budget, that gives us our anticipated new revenues for next year. We start with that pool of money and figure out where it's gonna go. We know each of our department expenses. We know the labor costs. We know the utility costs. We have anticipated repairs. And then we have requests for, you know, repairs, additions to structures, new vehicles and such like that. And we have an anticipated budget from the school. We know where they were last year, and we want to allow them a fair portion of that increase. We allow the other fair portion to town needs. And this town administrator and the finance committee spend hundreds of hours taking requests from our departments and have a tough job every year deciding who's gonna get a portion of that extra money, who gets their one repair or their one item or their new software this year. Um, it's difficult, and we go through this every year. In, in the past, um, ten to twelve years, when these requests have been done, and we ask the school to stay within budget, they've come up with a much higher number. We then have to pull those requests back from our other town departments, and this is why our vehicles are depleted, our vehi- our buildings are depreciated and dilapidated, and things aren't being taken care of. This is why our software is so much, we're having trouble getting our systems, and we're redoing it now, but working on the town's website's getting better than it was. But all these things fell behind because the money's never there, because it always went to the school. They have not once, I feel personally, tightened their belt and taken the same impact the rest of this town has had to take. And I think it's time that as we tell each department head, I know what you asked for, this is what you get, this is what you get, this is what you get, and this is a portion we have saved for the school. I like to be able to tell the school, this is what you get. We have no right to tell them how to spend it, but we have absolutely every right to tell them how much of our money they can have. And the town meeting is our opportunity to say that we're not happy with this request. It's harming our town. It's harming all five of our towns in this district, and therefore it's harming our attendance at our school because people don't want to live here. And this is, it's a snowball effect. If people don't want to live here, we're gonna have lower attendance. It's gonna be harder to pay for it, and the impact and burden on us is gonna go up. We need the school to fix their standing in the state education-wise. We need to rise up to where we used to be. When I moved to this town, we're probably the top twenty-five percent in the state for education and our testing standards in this town. We're not there now. I'd like to see that come back and people want to live here. But they're not gonna want to live here if they stop paying sixty or seventy cents on the dollar to the school, and they have no police, fire, town hall, or anything else to show for it. Who wants to live in that garbage box? Nobody. I'm going to propose a town meeting floor, a one point five eight percent increase in their budget, and I will have that number for town meeting, and I will request that amendment to their line, and I'm sure that will cause some discussion. But we'll have the opportunity to vote on that at town meeting on which, which budget we will vote for. As their budget is, I am staunchly unfavorable to it. I'm very much against it. Thank you for the time.
Mary Jane.
In those booklets that you have, I don't have one of those. Who are the school committee members, are the school committee members' names in the booklet?
I don't recall. We have them in the booklet. It might be in the town report, but I don't know if it's in the booklet.
I don't think they have it.
Yes.
I just, I, I just want to make a point that I believe QRSD is the largest employer in the district, in the town as well. I believe we, we do bring money in, and a lot of our...
I think I've heard that.
A lot of our teachers actually live here in town and pay taxes and do a lot here, too. I'm, I'm floored to hear you say, Greg, that you feel like they spend like they want to because...
Did you receive a recent email from the superintendent's school in regards to the budget as a school member, as an employee of hers?
I actually picked it up at the school district office.
Okay. Um, I, I find the fact that she makes those...
Can I finish speaking, Greg?
Yes.
I, I find it wildly inappropriate that you say our school gets to spend money on whatever they want.
I did not say that.
Uh, you said that they are not told no about things, and I've been in there, and I've been told many times that even kids don't have books that often. That there are so many things that our children are going without that they desperately need and deserve, and that is why they are asking for this amount of money. I, I'm so floored.
And they spent millions on smart boards, which are rarely used, which could have been spent on books and other things that would benefit the students much better. And as I began to say, the superintendent to send out messaging to all the teachers, um, to, to use her position to try to influence our town's policies and politics in votes with her authority as a superintendent by notifying all of the teachers is abhorrent, and I believe it's unethical. I believe it's very unethical, and I will look into that as well. I'm very strongly against the superintendent's reaching out and suggesting to her employees how they come handle things at town meeting. And, um, I'll say, leave that for there for now, but I'm, I'm not pleased with what I heard about that. I don't think most of the town would be.
Whether intended or not.
It's a misuse.
No, no, what it comes down, it's a fine line with the conflict of interest because she's supervisor. She cannot make any request. And that's the only thing I agree with on that whole conversation there was, if that happened, I would think somebody needs to reach out to her and think, you know, I can't do that. I'm not sure if she did a all-employee-wide email that said, show up and vote for our budget, because that's a very fine line of pushing your employees to do what you want because they're your employee. And you shouldn't have that power or influence on individuals in the town due to your position, and it's because of her position, not because she's a member of the town. So if that happened, I think she just needs to work, just clarify what she said, so it didn't come off as if you don't do what I say, you might get fired, because it can be perceived that way by some. She's just gotta be careful, that's all. If that happened, she's just gotta be careful. Because I'm, it sounds like that's what you're saying happened, or you believe happened.
I've seen the email, yes.
So she's just gotta be careful if that's what happened, and she should just double-check, dot her i's, cross her t's. In general, though, I would just, I guess what I'd like to do is just see if Dylan has more to say on this, because I think we've all stayed at our side.
Yeah, um, I'm worried about a different snowball effect. Um, our school performance will only get worse if the budget, uh, takes more hits. We already have a, a overstretched student-teacher ratio, one of the worst in the state. Uh, cutting funds will only make it worse, not better, and that rolls over into general enrollment rates, property values, community spirit in general. I don't have any school-age kids, um, so I don't have a personal interest in the school, but I just feel like uh, this just spills over into all aspects of our communities, and, uh, people won't want to start families in a failing school district, so I think we just need to be careful about being too austere.
Do you have any empirical data to support your statement that cutting the money will harm the education? Can, can you demonstrate that?
Uh, I don't have anything on me at the moment.
Because I can demonstrate over the years that we've increased the budget steadily. Um, several million dollars over the last ten years in the, in the education has gone down continually with the increase. So the money doesn't seem to affect that. It's, it's, whatever policies the school committee does, it's, it's not within our control. But the, how we spend our money is within our control.
Brad?
Yeah, I've been out of the vote for quite a while, but our assessment is based on October first of November, I believe.
Yeah, last year's October first.
Okay, we do have five towns, and my only one of them do the off, off base. The one thing I, I really discourage, and I, I've had this argument for fifty years about folks sitting right where you are, Mr. O'Sullivan, in twenty-two years of the school committee. And I will tell you, money wasn't wasted there. Like Carmen's, like he offers. And Mr. Lipson does not encourage people to come into Barry, and the worst thing that could happen is if school choice continues to go down. When I left there, we had over four hundred kids in the system. That's a couple million dollars a year, okay? We lived off that for a good number of years doing all capital projects because we worked with the selectmen and said, this is what has to happen with this kind of money. However, in the last few years, we get the unit for operating the money, okay? Operating budget was the worst thing that you could have done. Not you, but other people that decided to start applying that to get the assessments down, okay? We're not gonna accomplish anything by being negative, okay? And I, I appreciate the hours put in by everybody trying to come up with a budget that was realistic for everybody. I do disagree with you. I do disagree with you, Mr. Rossell, and to the fact that as a school committee person, your job is to advocate for the kids primarily, number one.
Absolutely.
Okay, and number two, work with the town officials with figures that they can live with. And it's not an easy thing. I would ask you, what have you done to get to the legislators? Don't they can come in and smoke embarrass and it has happened for years? Well, we're gonna get a new formula. Things are gonna be wonderful when we get this new formula. Uh, we're on record as supporting a change so that we could get more money, okay? As a small rural regional system, everybody, the greatest thing in the world is regionalized. That way you're gonna get transportation costs, you're gonna get everything. Well, I've seen the transportation costs, which is lags by a year, okay? Go down to as little as forty-five percent of what we spent prior year. There's too many unknowns and, and, and the only thing I can do is just to encourage you that. I'm disappointed, I don't know if there's anybody here from the school committee or, or the administration, I can't believe it. This never happened before. That's part of your job. And whatever happened with the superintendent, I'd say maybe, especially she's new. You certainly can't be standing out, but it's a support-
That was a practice of Ms. Marshall's while I'd seen many over the years. She, I, I'd seen Maury Marshall do the same thing many times over the years. It's, it's a practice that was passed on that, um, not understanding-
Is this the ramifications?
Not understanding, not understanding the ethics, ethics of it and stuff as I do now sitting in office. I've, I've said nothing about it before, um, but I will this time. And I want to be very clear, I'm not telling the school that they miss spending the money or how they're gonna do it. But statistics will show the decline in education and outstanding over the years. That's a fact, that's not a slander, that's not an insult, that's a simple fact. We have added money consistently over the last decade to the detriment of many of our town departments, that is a fact. And though we added money, the education has declined. So money isn't the, the, the end-all solution for the school. However, when I talk about sixty percent of the money going to the school and forty percent that's in the town, that's, that's where my concern as a selectman is. It's up to the school committee to do the best they can do with the money that the town can afford to give them. It's, and it's not up to the-
And they haven't done the best in presenting the budget that they did, they haven't done the best job? Boy, I hate to have them criticizing you.
They can go right ahead and criticize me, I'll stand behind any of my decisions and comments and I make them with the best of intent. And I do the best thing I can for this town in the finances of this town, which is the main job of this board.
I'm here to defend the school because I know what it's like, said man.
The main objective of this board is what we're doing right now is, is, is allocating the funds for the year, seeing that it's spent in accordance week by or by week with, with the warrants, that, that money is spent, how it's supposed to be sent and we control, um, and watch over the eleven million dollars that goes through this board, through this town, that's our primary job. And sixty percent of that job right now is going through the school. And although I can't tell the school how to spend it or what to do with it, and I don't pretend to. I'm saying that I would like the school to look harder at their budget and try harder to make some cuts and feel some of the pressure with our communities. And I don't feel like they have-
Where they can make the cuts?
That's not my place, it's not my place to. It's not my place to, and they made that clear.
Could the problem be too that they had to cut things because of lack of funding over the last ten years? When school, when-
He, he stopped.
I would like to, well, first of all, just a couple clarifications. The Q R S D budget is actually forty-nine percent of the town's budget. It's, when you combine in Monty Tech and the debt service, you start pushing the, I'm over fifty percent. I just, right here in the town thing, take the Q R S D school district, divided by the overall omnibus budget, forty-nine point one five percent. The numbers are right in front of you. So we just gotta be careful how we present the sixty forty ratio that is being presented. Because I don't think it's accurate, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, Greg, and the numbers right in front of us tell us so. Secondly, we do rely on our school committee members to work through the budget and try to find the best, where can we cut where we can't. But I think when people talk about how much this budget has grown in the last ten years, what you're not considering is how much the state and federal government have forced higher regulations and additional services that they don't fund. And that puts the burden on the local communities. And that's why in the very beginning, my biggest thing here about what I don't know is the real breakdown of those costs because I'm seeing it statewide. The quality of education is dropping in every community. It's not just in the rural communities, it's, it's everywhere. Why? Because someone at the state or federal level really screwed up when they said, these are the programs you have to fund and it's gonna work, and then it didn't. So now we threw a lot of money towards certain programs that didn't work. Or it was in, not properly implemented, it may have been a general good idea, but how it got implemented failed. Because it's not created a very positive effect on however they make these metrics and do these measurements. That's all I can base it on, I'm not in there, I'm not a teacher, I don't know if they feel like the tests aren't reflecting the actual education the students are getting. So maybe the students are actually walking out much better rounded and knowledgeable, but the tests aren't showing it that the state relies on. That's why I'm saying there's a lot of questions, if you're not in the school committee or working with the school, you're not gonna get all these answers to truly understand where your money's going and is it an effective expense? And I don't have that time, I'm sorry, I'm doing my best, but this is the role I chose. I don't have the time to be that involved in the school committee to figure all that out. So usually when you come before the board of selectmen, you want to know what I want. I want efficient use of my money, but I rely on that school committee member you voted in to do that. Because I don't have the ability to go through everything they went through in the last six months or year or years for those that are constantly doing it over and over to break it down to that level and say, yeah, this is where I think the hole is and this is where we can fill this and, you know, we're, yeah, we don't really need to spend it over here, we found that wasn't working, let's move it over here. I just don't have that experience and knowledge. So, yeah, I think any department, given time, you could look at and say, we could spend our money better. We can cut it, whether it's someone saying, yeah, we bought an extra smart board we don't need because if we could just put it on wheels and roll between classrooms as needed. I don't know. But I don't know that operation. I have questions, I do think we need more answers. But by tomorrow, I don't see any way I can stand before and say, I know this is the reason that we're failing or not. So that's why I wasn't pushing any changes to the proposed assessment that the finance committee went through and said, let's go with this. I'm just leaving it at that, but I just wanted to get the one statement out because intended or not, we made them-
We as a board recommended the one point four percent and voted on it a few meetings ago, so we did propose a, a changed number.
Yeah, like I said, we were talking then-
Right, and, and I, I'm just saying, I would suggest a, a higher number now than that because that would still work. And I think that's a phantom that works for the towns and the towns budgets.
Right, because I know when we were talking the last few weeks, we were talking based on the impact of Hubbardston.
Yeah, and all the towns in general, and the one point four.
Was the significant discussion point was-
Right, and it doesn't need to go as low as one point four, it could be one point five eight and still, and work now, so-
That's because Hubbardston wanted five percent, but they could make six percent and that's your one point four to one five eight for Barry.
Right, right. The one five eight school total, Barry would still be at three, what, three?
One point five.
Oh, one point seven three, yes, yeah, but that's a one seven three. But I'm saying the, we originally voted at our meeting that we recommend one point four and we go along with the recommendation of one point four. That not recommendation, I'd say, should at least go up to the one five eight now. But they're at two two four, so there's still fifty percent above what we asked, they tried to shoot for.
Right, and the only reason I'm suggesting that we're not changing it on the floor is if the other three towns flat out refuse it, they're gonna work through it and bring that budget down whether we like it or not, and we just don't have to vote for it again.
I believe-
But otherwise, we have to vote for it again and it's a whole different story. And so that's the only, every, every time we do that, it's what, another five thousand dollars minimum for the town clerk to come up with the money to go through the whole balloting and it, it's so, not preparing for something just because we want to make a stance, you can stand on the floor and make that stance. You can make it by on your recommendation or lack thereof in this vote. But suggesting to remove the number and lower that number is not helping the town. It's not helping our neighboring towns. It's just making it so we may have to vote again and spend more money just to address that line item budget. You're still making your voice known otherwise. So that's the only reason I presented it the way I did. You don't have to agree with the budget, you have to just understand the impact of the town if you don't vote with what they assessed. And the finance committee said, we can afford it in this year's tax levy. Again, I'm just saying that's, I got nothing more to say on that, I'm just, but I would like to give Tom, he hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
Just a quick procedural question. If it came to, you, we had to revote the school budget, how is that done? Is that a special town meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
And I don't know if it can wait for our normal special town meeting.
No.
Because I think it's, once the state makes whatever determination, it's like, you got so many days to get together and vote on it. Which probably means we either skip a special town meeting or we rush warrants to a special town meeting we're waiting on, or we do two special town meetings and just spend a lot of money just to do that. So I'm just saying that those are all the little things rolling around in my head when I suggest this. It's not coming from, do I like the budget number or not?
The town, the school needs, um, four, uh, four out of five to pass. They need seventy percent vote, so three gives them sixty, it's unweighted. Um, so they need four to pass, so if one of the town votes it down, it will fail. We could wind up, you know, accepting a number we don't like later and I, I think if they change the number, we're gonna have to revote it. Unless it's, unless we pass it this long way.
We only have to revote it if the number comes in higher than what we passed.
I, I, I am a man of principle and I think that we've requested they get to a certain point, we've made an impassioned plea, as have the other towns, because of our town's budgets. Um, that was done without criticism of the school or any operation of the school. That was done with a request to how the funding works in this town and, and the difficulties the towns have funding, the other things they fund. You know?
And I, and I understand your point, I'm really not trying to deny that.
That is just, I think disrespectful to the towns. And as I said, I don't think the school committee represents the town to the school, they represent the school's interest in, in pushing to the towns, which is, which is not the intent of the school committee.
Fran.
We have one last comment, uh, that, Mr. Rossell. I agree with one statement you made, you have to look at the overall picture and you have to look at the town. But I think Chairman Irvin hit the nail right on the head. Look out, if this goes to the state, legal fees plus what they come down and tell you, this is what you're going to pay. Okay, all I'm asking for is that you people protect the town in this instance. And you're gonna have to make this determination whether or not it's in the best interest and you have a right to offer an amendment to the, to the budget. If you're successful with it, fine. I mean, if, I would expect the school committee to come into your hand and say, based on, and you must have told them, or you're proposing, or one point five or whatever it was that gets thrown out there, that they could say, in the event this passes, these are the programs that will be cut. Okay, or, you know?
They, they can represent whatever they want with their budget, that, that's not the point. The, the, the point is the numbers for the town. And the point for me is if, if we approve this, um, we, we are thirty-something percent, thirty-seven percent of the, of the school's budget. If this goes to the state and such a large portion of, of the shareholder, shall we say, is in favor of this, that harms our other communities without our support. So I think it's important this town supports our other communities. It's in support, it's important that the town say, no, we, we've asked for a different budget, we, we'd like it here. Um, that's also sends a signal, if it goes to the state for arbitration, to hear it. If all the towns are against this, they, they take the towns more seriously, it may come down more in our favor. Especially we demonstrate why we asked for it.
Now for chapter ninety, okay? Till we visit the formula. I will say to you, I've never met anyone that I've been involved for a long time that would tell you what was in the formula for reimbursement to, to, uh, pounds for education.
I, I don't think they adhere to a formula personally, but-
There's actually a formula written right into the law. And then it's based on policy that comes out of that, but there's a, if, if you've read it, it's based on town valuation, it's based on, I think, town mean income. I mean, it, there's, there's a lot in there where they say, based on your population, the quantity of people and what you guys make, we assume this is what you should be able to cover for your own school budget and the state will fill in the gap. And so, yes, they are expecting more affluent communities, based on the way it's written, to be able to cover more. But the truth is, there are clauses in there that also hit backwards. Where the state's contribution, the minimum contribution by the state is also based on those same valuations. So that's where the competition of discussions on the formula just continue to circle, it's a-
Yes, I think that the last time that we went through this where the school budget did not get passed by local towns and was going, it had to be revoked and that had to go to state, our, our, like, the state got the design. And they came in and they gave what the percentages would have to be to the different towns. Yes, the town of Barry would have been reduced like minusculely, but the town of Oakham and some of the other towns were actually such a large increase that prior to those numbers being accepted, they said, forget it, wait, stop, 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 that's the whole process. We want to vote for what the school had already suggested. Because it was gonna be such a large increase based on what the state was gonna have them paying, that they didn't want to continue with that whole process, they wanted to go back to what the school board had requested. So I'm just warning you now, the school board and what they have requested tends to be far lower than what your state recommendations are gonna be. And we go through this every couple of years, it gets to the point where it gets really high and then the towns say it's too much and then the state comes and says, okay, then pay more than what your school board was requesting. So I'm just saying, it, it goes in this cycle multiple times. This is not the first time that this budget has been voted down on the first try. But it doesn't tend to go better when the state gets involved.
And we can be warned about things in the past and try to scare me off of my opinion, but it, it, it won't scare me off my opinion. We're, we're working on logic and fact and, and what the town can afford. Um, the minimum we can afford that we should contribute, the state says is three and a half million, we're two million plus above that. We're certainly not skirting of responsibilities as, as a state season. And I think if, like I said, if all five towns make this statement, not a split, if some approved and some didn't, usually, you know, if three approve it and two don't, then yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna put it up and hurt those two because everyone else is okay with it. But if all five towns say no, and I believe they, they will possibly, probably at least four, um, I think that sends a, a much better signal to the state that there's something wrong here. And I'm talking about a split of, of two holding out or maybe three, I'm, I'm thinking four or five will say no this year. And if they do, that sends a strong signal to the school committee that they really need to consider what the people in these towns are trying to tell them about, about our pocketbooks. It's up to the school to do the best they can to the school, but within the money they're, they're given. This board can tell every other town department how much money they get. And they adjust their budgets and do the best they can with what they're given. You know, D P W doesn't walk in and say, hey, I need a million dollars this year because I want to buy these things and suck it up. They don't get to do that, only the school gets to do that.
Only the school is a separate municipal entity according to the state as well.
Right.
None of our departments are separate from us.
But when the school does do that, we have the ability to say, no.
All right, Dean.
Um, the, just my takeaway from this is I don't really quite understand why Selectman Rossell is being painted as a bad guy for actually raising the question. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's a discussion.
He's simply raising a question and it seemed like half the room wanted to jump on him. If this was a business, if this was a private business being run, it would be scrutinized. All he's doing is, one of our selectmen is saying, I think we need to look more closely at this, I'm not putting words in his mouth. But to, to paint him as a bad guy for, for, for doing this is, is ridiculous. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
The last thing.
Go ahead, Fran.
And I know you're trying to expedite all of these things quick. I don't believe you can be doing it without- I don't believe you can be doing it without a motion. And a second, and then calling for a vote, but that's okay, you can ask the moderator. I mean, I hate to skip into town meeting, then find out that all the votes you took are now in void. Okay, now, you're gonna ask in this particular case, that a motion been made, and if there's a second, second it, give Mr. O'Sullivan the opportunity to vote against it, and then it's on record. Two out of three are, are only one selectman voted for it, one abstained, or whatever, it's permanent record.
Okay. Can you keep it short, Sam?
As far as voting, I would hate to think that this town is voting out of fear because of what the state may or may not do, or what other people, what other towns may or may not do. We have to vote our conscience, and if we, like other departments, we give it other departments, and they have to live within our standards. We have the school, that's the biggest, biggest department within all our departments, and they seem to want it to control us, and I was really amazed that I heard that the superintendent sent out letters to, to the employees.
I've not seen it.
I haven't seen it either, I just heard it.
I've heard one person say he's seen it, and I'm not denying it, but because I haven't seen it, I would like to just make sure that we don't call it as fact.
All right, well, we probably should look at it.
You can, I just mean, unless he's seen it, he shouldn't follow up or call it fact.
No, I haven't seen it, I'm just understanding.
Sorry, I just want.
If that's accurate, then we should, we should revisit that and say, "That's not very kosher."
And there's a process. Bring it to the school committee's attention. They are the oversight of the superintendent.
It may be a little late now.
Go to the ethics.
It's never late. It doesn't matter, because just as Fran said, if certain things happened, it can selectively go back and change all decisions that were made leading up to something. If it is considered significant, things like that can happen. But there's also no reason not to bring it up if you're truly concerned. So you bring it to your school committee and you raise it, and you let them deal with it. That's the process, is all I'm saying. Unless you want to go outside the local, and I never suggest bring the state in before you try local, because you don't know what the state's gonna bring down. All I would like to do is make a motion to vote, whether you're favorable or not, on the QRSD operating budget.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? Mary Jane.
I think there should be a secret ballot on that article that Mr. O'Sullivan's trying to reveal.
That can be brought up at the floor tomorrow.
Fear as to how you're gonna vote, and if you're gonna have a job.
That is easily brought before the floor, you can request it, then they vote to see if they approve it, and then you go through the process. So tomorrow, that, you have every right to request the moderator to move forward with that. Call for vote. Sorry, did you have more to say?
No.
Because I understood the intent, I'm sorry, I didn't know there was no.
What are you taking out?
For the.
The recommendation of the selectmen for the school budget.
I'm unfavorable, nay.
Favorable, aye.
And I'm favorable for multitude of reasons that I've discussed tonight. So, two, one, zero on the old recommendation list for QRSD. I would suggest, though, that anybody has further requests to understand where the money's going and is it not being spent, or coming to the board and saying it's not spent wisely. I really would like you to bring some data to support where it's been spent and why it's been spent unwisely. I'm okay if it's been spent unwisely, I'm okay looking into it. They came before us, two weeks ago, or three or four, but Cheryl, the, three of the group, and Cheryl came before and presented and actually broke down categories of the budget and subcategories of the budget of where they're trying to spend the money. I know there's more questions in that, and you can dig deeper. But at the moment, that would take me about a good three weeks with whatever spare time I have to dig deeper, just to know what questions to ask, to get more information, to dig deeper. It's a very complex budget. You want to really find out where they're spending money, you gotta look at their audit. You gotta look at their receipts, you gotta dig, and I'm not saying don't dig, but don't just throw it at the Board of Selectmen, because it's your school committee you should be yelling at if you don't like the way they spend their money. Not the Board of Selectmen. We have no control over, other than this debate, and we can make a recommendation or not.
On the total number, not how they spend it.
At most, we're an advisory board to the town of whether we like what they're doing with the money. And we can talk to them and ask for recommendations and work with them to try to work within the budget we think we can afford. And we've done that, and they actually met us with the number we thought we could afford, but it doesn't necessarily favor our neighboring towns. And we have reached out to those towns, and I reached out to Andrew when these budgets came in and said, "Could you please reach out to the towns expecting?" And that's why I feel comfortable knowing three towns aren't going for it, one town is going for it, and that doesn't include us. So I know there's one town saying, "We're voting based on the assessment that was presented, and we're comfortable with it as a board." So, it's not just Barry that might be presenting and saying, "We can afford the line item that's been asked of us." So my bigger argument is kind of what Greg was saying. My argument isn't whether we could afford it, it's the effect we're having on, on our neighbors and whether they can afford it. But I still don't think not voting on what was proposed is to benefit to us. Because of all the other things that can happen out of this, that we just don't need to get in. I would like to move on to Article twenty-two, the sewer enterprise budget. Does anybody have questions about the sewer enterprise budget? Make a motion to vote on the recommendation as to whether you are favorable for the sewer enterprise budget.
Second.
Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I, I would recommend we're done. We take items one through twenty-one, and make, make a second motion to approve those as we've annotated them, so they're officially voted on.
That's okay, but that's what I thought I did in the beginning.
Yes, but we'll do it again.
And he seems to believe you really gotta break it down, a motion for each item, and he's got the experience, so for her to do that, we'll ask her to read out the votes and make the motion to accept the votes later. I don't want to just keep bogging everybody down by going back, if you don't mind, I, I see your point, though.
I have no problem doing it, Balkan. If, if our, you know, if our favorables, unfavorables are not considered to be a legitimate vote, you can say that there's a question whether to, how we voted on these was accurate. This is our opinions, but the votes may not be, uh, binding.
Right.
I, I mean, it's a little consequence.
We'll do a, maybe a summary review of the vote and try to make a motion that may accept that as, I see what you're saying.
And Mr. O'Sullivan should be allowed to point out a couple times that he would be abstaining because of the affiliation with the fire department.
Right.
Let's be so known that he didn't.
Make the, right, the, the reason you abstained was because of your affiliation, not just for any other reason.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but that's your call if you want to do it.
Of course, then people should know why I'm abstaining. I'd be surprised if someone doesn't ask.
Article twenty-three. FY twenty water enterprise budget, or fund, is listed in the booklet. Do we have any discussion? Like to make a motion to vote favorable for the water budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Article twenty-four, transfer to stabilization. I can make a motion to vote favorable for the transfer to stabilization, Article twenty-four. Does that, any discussion?
The only thing I would caveat is if, no, I guess no, I guess no matter what happens, if we don't approve the school's budget, that number will stay the same for now until it's settled. It may have to be amended at the time, if the budget's amended one way or the other, so.
Andrew, where's the value of the estimated, uh, move to stabilization? I don't see it written in the booklet.
Uh, current value is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven eighty-eight.
No, how much are we moving?
Oh, fifty thousand, I'm sorry.
It's not written in here.
Uh, it wasn't because it wasn't a finalized figure when the budget was, or when this was printed, but will be part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. So, any further discussion?
So we're gonna vote to approve the transfer to stabilization, the number as it's defined at town meeting floor. In other words, we're approving the transfer, and that number has to be finalized at the floor.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only last comment I want to make on it, to make sure we're clear. It's not a solid number yet.
Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Article twenty-five, amend the code of the town of Barry, amend chapter eighty dash four. This is to revise chapter eighty dash four, playing ball, throwing stones, um, which, uh, originally was specific to North Common area. Um, we have a citizen's petition requesting some amendments to that to identify some things that should apply in other areas of the town. Um, specifically Trafalgar Square. Make a motion to vote favorable for Article twenty-five as written and presented by the citizen's petition.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, call for vote.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
One, two, oh. Two nays.
I was positive the other two were against.
Okay, I, I didn't hear what you said.
Yep. All right, Article twenty-six, marijuana licensing bylaw, this is the bylaw proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to vote favorable as a recommendation by the Board of Selectmen.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Should we have abstained?
It is not a conflict, I don't think, I think we're a hundred percent.
I'm part of that board, no, I'm just having fun, having fun, we gotta lighten it up, guys, it's getting, it's getting rich. Article twenty-seven, amend the code of town of Barry, marijuana establishments, this is a zoning bylaw that was presented by the planting, planning board. Um, the latest revision was approved last week, and I believe is incorporated in this booklet. Make a motion to vote favorably upon Article twenty-seven, the zoning bylaw presented by the planning board for regulation of marijuana establishments.
I second the motion to take a favorable vote.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question, how did the, how did the finance committee vote on that?
No ra, no recommendation. No, that's not true. There's a side thing where they voted unfavorable, four, zero, two. So two abstained, four were against, and nobody were for. Because it's written as unfavorable, you gotta pay attention to the, the vote, just because it's four, zero, two, actually is four, zero, two not in favor of the art. Am I correct, that's how you, this was intended to be written? So. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I just want to, um, know that, what the Board of Selectmen makes a recommendation for or against this? If the Board of Selectmen is aware of what that bylaw means for the town.
Yes, it means that they're restricted to one possible location, the marijuana could be sold in this town, which, which basically zones it out of town, which in my opinion is, um, not a, not a realistic zoning bylaw. It's, it's against the spirit of the state law, in my opinion, uh, Mr. Higgins here has done some research and, um, by himself, and demonstrated, and gave us all the points of location to, to back it up and look into it. And it's, as we suspected, it's really overly restrictive, and it's effectively zoning out or banning marijuana, and, um... If that's what you were driving towards, yes, that's what I take from it. If you mean something different, you, you are welcome to say it.
Do you have anything to say on that?
No, no comment.
Yes, Sam.
Are these three bylaws gonna be extremely confusing to constituents?
Very possible.
The differences highlighted on the page for them.
There's such a, there's such a fine line, you think we could.
It was done before.
You think based on Selectman O'Sullivan's wording, would it be, it would be nice if we all could come to consensus and say, we have twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, uh, we think, we being the selectmen, think that the town would be better off, would be, would be better off and follow the state's concepts a little bit better if we supported number seventeen, for instance, we're using numbers, instead of confusing everybody, because this is gonna be late at night, people are gonna say, "I don't care, I wanna go home and watch the game." And then we're gonna have, we perhaps might lose, uh, some significant business revenue if we don't think straight. And this is for all three selectmen. And right now, business revenue is critical.
Yes.
So what do you, what's your impression regarding the, the suggestion of somehow linking this together?
Well, they're both a vote on all three of them.
First of all, of the three, two of them are citizen's petitions. And one is presented by the planning board with the latest revisions they've made. So the Board of Selectmen is not gonna refuse the planning board's request to be on the warrant. And we don't have legal right to refuse the other two. So there's three here, not because the Board of Selectmen said, "We love the idea of confusing the general public." We're there because we felt it was in the best interest of our relationship with the planning board to make sure they have their spot. And by law, we're required the other two also had their spot. When it comes to the three bylaws, we will make our recommendation for each tonight. It will be published on this side sheet that's gonna be handed out with the booklets tomorrow night. And the idea is, everybody on the floor can look at Article twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and they'll see the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen's recommendations for each, and hopefully that will help those that haven't been able to read every paragraph of all three of these and say, "Well, there are two other boards that are in favor or not in favor of this one. If they're not in favor and I don't know enough, I'm not going with that, and I'll go to the next." That's the best we can do. We cannot do anything more than that than whatever gets talked on the floor.
And I suppose.
So we're making that effort to accomplish that tonight.
If we follow through that way, and perhaps we find out that the town, because of confusion, confusion, voted anti-business, you realize that there may be a good possibility of significant lawsuits from the state because the town decided to be restrictive, and the goal of the state is not to be restrictive. Are you, um, this happened once before.
Preacher to the choir, sir, that's a planning board recommendation, not ours.
But this happened once before in this town, when people in the town opposed something, a department opposed something, and it worked before it was litigated, and the town ended up paying big legal fees, and it all worked out in the end to be positive, but we still paid big legal fees. Let's, let's, as a board, tried to figure out. Let's, let's as a board try to figure out how we can avoid legal fees for being restrictive. That's, I guess, all I'm saying.
I got you. Further discussion on article twenty-seven?
I find it to be overly restrictive, I find it, that it certainly gives the appearance that they are trying to control one hundred percent of the marijuana industry. From licensing to empirical numbers of how many licenses, where they can be, how they can be, um, odor, they're taking in border health issues, they wanna control odor, they wanna control structures, they wanna control every aspect of this under their authority, which I think is extremely overreaching.
I agree with Greg.
I guess, uh, just to clarify, the motion was to call for a vote in favor of article twenty-seven. Call for a vote?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Article twenty-eight, to clarify, this was a citizen's petition submitted. I believe it was the same bylaw presented at the special town meeting last fall. With no revisions from that time. So, I make a motion to vote, to vote favorably for article twenty-eight.
I'll second your motion for the vote.
Any further discussion? Kathy?
Two questions again, the first is, planning, finance committee, from Raymond, who on this one?
That's right.
Okay, um, but my second question, and I, I just, I must be misunderstanding here, I think this hearing for the citizen's petition for Dennis, was that called on May seventh? Do you know? Oh, and I'm just asking, because I'm, for the public notices, it's, it's just, the way they were written, it doesn't look like it was a citizen's petition, and I always thought you had to say who the petitioner was in a public notice. It almost looks like the planning board submitted those. Uh, I would just question, you might wanna check with Jim, whether the notice of thousands in the, in the paper.
Hmm. Did that end up on the June third or fourth? Didn't they have a public hearing for a couple items? I think those were more the zoning switches by the owners, but I know, I'm just calling out,
I know.
posting it there versus putting it in a paper, which I don't know if that's the other public hearing requirement, it's worth checking, 'cause.
Yeah, I have the paper here.
I just look at the agenda.
It looks like it's just part of the planning board, it doesn't say citizen's petition, but Matt, the two citizens, what's it written on, I think Jim or did say citizen's petitions, and the other ones did as well, so it just, I, maybe it's fine, I don't know.
I would put it this way, my understanding is this, citizen's petition comes in to get on the warrant, comes before the Board of Selectmen, our job is send it to the planning board. They have their twenty-one day requirement to get a public hearing going, to respond to that and send their recommendation back to us. Generally, if I'm correct, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna speak for the other members, when we get a citizen's petition that has the accurate numbers certified by the town clerk, we are not always waiting for the planning board's recommendation, we can still put it on the warrant with or without the recommendation. Legally, we're allowed to do that. So, generally, we do that. So, I don't know if it affects its right to be on the warrant, but it may affect whether it was properly published in the hearing before to tell everybody what it was about. I don't know if that has any legal standing, though, in the actual vote on town floor and whether it can become a bylaw. 'Cause it's all about the recommendation, they're not approving a bylaw, they're just providing a recommendation. So, it may invalidate their recommendation, but it doesn't necessarily invalidate the actions of the Board of Selectmen if we were not to change our action with or without that recommendation.
I just, I thought.
That's all I.
I thought for zoning bylaw, the planning board had to have a hearing on it as well.
They had to have a hearing in order to provide the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
And then they didn't have to give a recommendation either way, but they had to have a hearing.
I don't recall us receiving a written recommendation on that. Doesn't mean they didn't do it, but I think we acted whether we intended to receive it or not. Knowing the players involved, and it was just easier to put it on and let the town have fun with it. I'm sorry, but it's kinda.
Their intent was to not take action on this because it was duplicate of their efforts.
And tomorrow, they might immediately say, we'd like to withdraw this article, just to save the confusion. I'm hoping that's what they do.
You're talking about twenty-nine or twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We've had discussions on, um, citizen petitions on our warrants. And my opinion has been strong on this, and we've never heard the research back we were looking for, but in order for a citizen to effect a zoning bylaw, there are strict rules, and we do not place it on the warrant. We forward it within fourteen days to the planning board, they hold the hearings and recommendations, and until we have that back, we don't place it on the warrant. And I, I've said from the beginning, I don't think this belongs in the warrant, I didn't think either of those petitions did, 'cause it's zoning bylaws, and they hadn't been vetted prior to coming to us, and I think placing one on the warrant was inappropriate then and is inappropriate now until they've done the process prior to this warrant being posted. I didn't think they had the time to survive then, um, to go through the proper procedures, and I.
So, you voted against that when we chose what to put on the warrant?
I, I recommended we didn't do that one, yes, I didn't want these on the warrant, and if, and we were asked about it, and we were trying to clarify, we're gonna clarify with the state the procedure.
But you can't take action on it, not that you can't put it on the warrant, you can't take action at town meeting without a recommendation.
So, my, my concern on it is, and if, if I stated it differently, it had been understood differently. My belief is to effect a zoning bylaw because it affects the whole town, and it affects the permits, it affects our tax rate, many other things, other than just somebody wants to change something. When they're asking to zone their own property, as, as the Higgins are asking, that's their property, they're asking to rezone something they own, that's a different petition, that goes on the warrant. When someone's trying to affect the zoning bylaws that affect the entire town, they have to go through this process before they can be voted on. Because it, it affects too many other things, and I thought this had to have the approval of the planning board to be allowed to be voted on, that was my impression.
My understanding is it had nothing to do with approval, you just needed them to tell you what they thought.
And that's what, and that's what I asked to have clarified.
My bigger, from my position, there's a fine line between trying to protect against what you're saying, someone that's kinda pushing in a zoning bylaw that affects a lot of people that could be detrimental to the town or those people, versus putting it on the floor and letting the town tell you, is that what they want? I don't like to be the one, if someone comes in, I'd say, I'd like to present this bylaw, to say, nope, I'm not even giving you a chance to ask the town. I don't have to agree, but I gotta give them the voice and I gotta give them a place. I expect the town to show up if they disagree with it and say, no, I don't. They don't show up, shame on them, you're getting what you get. Don't put it on me because I let it get to the floor so you could figure out whether you like it or not. Because that's on you for not showing up.
I expect us to follow the rules.
I'm sorry, you just hit me there, it's like, don't play these games about should it have been on the warrant. It can be on the warrant no matter what, none of those laws said it couldn't be on the warrant, it talks about what you can do about it once it's on.
I disagree.
Well, find the law, and I will review with you, and I will listen if I'm wrong, I don't see anything saying it can't be on the warrant. As Andrew said, you may not be able to take action unless an appropriate recommendation has been filed with our office.
I believe it had said you shall not place it in the warrant until it has been, gone through that process. In any event.
You may be right.
It would still have to survive the state after this, and if it's not done properly, I, I don't think it will survive the state vetting.
And that's okay.
Which I don't think any of these will survive the state vetting.
So, I would like to start with the next step. Is there anything else we'd like to talk about on this article, or should I be moving to a vote? Is there more discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Can he bring a citizen's petition up in front of his own board? That'd be like, if you wanted to make a citizen's petition.
I question that at the time of receiving it.
That's an ethical thing or something?
Depends on if he participated in the review of his own petition. If he abstained, there's enough members on the board to still maintain it for him. So, there's a potential, and it's not a self-serving one, it's a, it's city, like a town-wide effect, it's, so there's a lot in the conflict of interest that pretty much say, if you deal with administrative things, you can still come before your own board if it does not have a specific personal benefit. So, you're still representing something that affects everybody equally. Then, you're kind of exempt from that conflict of interest when presenting to your own board. So, I thought about it, but I think there's a lot of outs that prevent that from actually being in the conflict of interest that initially is perceived as.
Okay, and, but like, so those votes would be on record, so someone could actually take a look and see if you abstained or not?
Yep.
There should be, yes.
They should, exactly. Call for a vote, article twenty-eight, reminder, this is a vote as to whether you are favorable for article twenty-eight. Call for a vote?
Nay.
Nay. Nay?
Nay.
Article twenty-nine, this is another citizen's petition. Uh, before we get into the craziness, the first two generally came from some source of the planning board. One was, again, last year's version, and one was an updated version from the planning board. This one was developed, and I did clarify this at a previous meeting today with the marijuana bylaw review committee that the Board of Selectmen did establish. In their review, they said article twenty-nine is the closest to their proposed revision of a zoning bylaw that they presented to the planning board after five, six weeks of really hardcore effort of meeting two, three times a week sometimes, if not more, to try to present options. So, this is not the same, but very similar to what the bylaw review committee presented. But I do understand that the last meeting, at least two or three things are specifically different. And I have to admit that that may mean some of those bylaw review committee members may think those two or three things that are missing are significant. So, I do not want it known as this is what the bylaw review committee as a whole presented. It has been modified. I'm just trying to present that it is different than the other two. I believe many would consider it less restrictive, although some might say it's still too restrictive. I do think at some point, especially for, it was brought up at a previous meeting, outdoor cultivation, which is pretty much designed for R-eighty in Archon. Without a zoning bylaw, that won't happen, 'cause they cannot do this type of business in an R-eighty in our town, because it is not run by agricultural commission activities, and therefore it's got its own little thing, it's just like a business, so it can't fit into R-eighty. At least that's how it's been presented to me, but a lawyer might be able to prove different. If I were personally to support one of the three, this would be the one I would support. But I just wanna make the motion so we can get everybody else in the discussion, so I'm gonna make a motion to vote favorable for article twenty-nine.
Second the motion to have the favorable vote.
Further discussion, anybody in the crowd, anybody, anybody?
I would make a comment that this still contains a five-hundred-foot setback, um, from residences, which keeps us to a one parcel in town that qualifies. Further, it still insists upon the planning board having a special license granting authority, which I'm against and opposed to, I think they have, it's still overreaching, it's still too much control. The definitions, the zoning, even a setback, things are fine, um, the, the type of area, type of zone it should lie in is fine. But I think it's far overreaching, and they're trying, trying to, as a board, get into not just zoning, but they're trying to get into, uh, you know, building size, structure, and type of structure, setbacks, uh, business hours, number of businesses, odor, odor control, using border health, and so many other things, there's gotta be an enforcement authority on this and all sorts of things. It's, it's just far overstepping what I, I see the duties as the planning board being on this, and, and that's why I'm really against all three of these. But of the three, yes, I like this the best. I think it still needs work. For me to like it.
Sam?
Of all these three, this is gonna be a question, someone's gonna ask. Which is most business-friendly?
Of the three?
Of the three, yes.
My review and opinion is article twenty-nine.
Even though selectmen, uh, for Sullivan, thinks it's still far overreaching.
That is not the same as which one is most business-friendly.
Right, I said far overreaching by its own.
You can have three that I completely disagree with, but one's still closer to the goal.
Agreed.
So, just to clarify, I mean, between Boston, Newton, and Wellesley, they're all still far from Berry to me. But I would say that Newton's a little closer, maybe.
Greg, um, it isn't five hundred feet from residential home, from, from a person's house, it's not five hundred feet. It is, um, residential programs or group homes, so like, group homes would be something similar to Stetson School, or like the, uh, there's a couple, there's one up on Hubbardson Road.
Okay, stand corrected, I see that, I did read that through, it says homes, I didn't read group homes. Um, that, there's still, I think Andrew looked that up today for me, and that, that blossomed to four places available. We went to, um, it, we, I mean, if we take the five-hundred-foot out completely with no, no limit on distance, it still only gives us about four properties in town that can be used.
So, I'm pretty sure.
The other restrictions.
It also changes, uh, acreages that are, I believe that.
What's your acreage at?
I believe this opens up a lot of other places in town.
How low is the acreage, 'cause we, we were using three for numbers still.
So, excluding the industrial zone, but I believe in the business commercial, it drops, it's a one.
That, that, that would make a difference, but I don't think huge.
It was outdoor, grow, was three, limited to three acres of industrial zone property, just outdoor grow.
Okay, so we'd have to get a better number on.
So, the indoor.
I'd love to see a solid number on that, then, is what that would change for the exact numbers in this. That's, that's my, that's my first concern, but the, the, the special permit granting authority to the, to the zoning board, and the, the amount of places they wanna have their hand involved in, this I think is far overreaching. There are opportunities to establish what type of zone it will be in, maybe even what type of structure in that zone if they want, but really, I think that should be it, hours of operation, number of permits, um, you know, reporting to them with, with progresses is, that's, that's management, that's not zoning. Those management aspects I don't think belong in their hand at all, and I think it shouldn't be there. I know they don't like it when I say that, I'm not, I'm, you know, I see their role and their duties as differently than they do in this. And that's just my opinion, and my opinion is, everyone has an opinion, it's like something else we say, um, they always stick, but.
Just a sec, Tom. Just to clarify, if article twenty-nine did go to the floor and pass, one, it opens the door for a developer that we already have a host community agreement with that requires one to be in place or they cannot move forward. Any other delay to rewrite again and keep pushing out pushes out, if you're a finance person, pushes out potential revenue, if you're not, it pushes out more developers. And all you need is that to continue to go around the block and realize that the town is willing to kinda say nice things, and then they're gonna pull their hand out from under the agreement and make your life hard, and then therefore, nobody wants to come back to town. It goes beyond just that one development. The word spreads, people know. I would suggest you can take this article twenty-nine. You can, you can, any one of us can. Go through it, if you think something's too restrictive, draw a line through it, identify a motion and put it on the floor to remove certain paragraphs of it. I'm trying to tell everybody here, nobody either one gives me a reason why they don't accept it, or why it couldn't work, or why they don't trust it. But anything you think is a hole that leaves the town vulnerable, you put on the Board of Selectmen in the host community agreement. We still have more power than the planning. We still have more power than the planning board does on anything we ask them to do on that site. If you want to remove all offsets from residents in your motion, do so. But then tell the town, your job is to go to the Board of Selectmen and tell them, you've got to deal with the neighbors, and you've got to accept the neighbors. Part of our general bylaw we put in there is to make sure there's more than one public hearing so that we can't fast-track something, we're actually getting the town to put the burden on us to give you more opportunity to tell you what you want. Because it is not our intent to reduce the town's ability to protect itself and its own people, but it is our intent to allow us to truly, subjectively look at each application and say, does it fit there? And you can't do that in a zoning bylaw the way we've written them.
And?
So I would just suggest, find a way to pass one, even if you put a lot of motions to clean up a lot of mess, you think, but rely on the Board of Selectmen to do their job, too. It sounds like nobody believes the Board of Selectmen can do what the planning board does. These are written to put all of the burden on the planning board, yet the state specifically called out zoning should be much more like alcohol. And all of these subjective things should fall on the Board of Selectmen through the Host Community Agreement. That is a nutshell of how they presented it to the towns. You can break down all the detail if you want. But if somebody asks for, what's your alcohol zoning bylaws in your town, and you kick this out, they would pretty much say, you must be Lancaster. You're a dry town. There was no effort to work with us when it comes to coordinating the planning board and the Board of Selectmen and Host Community Agreement. I made the effort for over a year to work with them. And I went to meetings uninvited to try to discuss with them. We invited them to our meetings a couple times. We never once, if I recall, maybe once, I'm not sure, got a formal invite from them for us to come to them about a specific agenda item to follow up with these discussions. From the very beginning, nobody.
We offered them a vote to take some things out. We offered them a vote on our agreement, so they would have participation.
Well, that's what I mean. We we said, let's work together. So when I see this, I see the effort never, like, I must have failed in trying to explain the power of the Host Community Agreement. Because nobody came back and asked me, or could you clarify? Could you explain? What do you mean? They just heard it and walked away. So I'm confused. I don't understand it. Still to this day, why has nobody come to me and said, why won't that work? So for me, I'm gonna have a hard time with any of these bylaws, other than I know passing one of them, at least let's one of our developers that we've written a Host Community Agreement with try to make efforts to move forward. And everybody that came into this room and heard his public hearing presentations and the multiple meetings we had, supported him. I did not get one negative word from anybody in any of these meetings saying, well, how are you gonna deal with that? He'd already presented it. Everybody had their answers, or if they didn't, once again, they're not using the methods in front of them to explain their concern. So I I really, I think I've said enough to explain my concern with this zoning bylaw and the effort. I can't say enough about the effort that the planning board went in, because I know they put a lot of effort in. They put a lot of time in. I think our bylaw review committee put an exceptional amount of time in for the short amount of time we asked them to do it, and I appreciate that.
And we accepted and used all of their recommendations for our bylaws.
The only thing we modified, I think, was the number of complaints we had to respond to.
Right, the the odor investigation, but we took everything they recommended into our consideration. The last thing I'd say on this is the troubling thing about the zoning, uh, planning board having control of this licensing and being the the enforcer and inspector and all these other aspects that I don't think they should be doing, they clearly have attempted to zone this out of town. If if that's their express intent to not have marijuana, and they're gonna be control of the licensing and the special granting, you guess how many permits you're gonna give? And that's gonna be zero. There's only one land in town they could they could issue to for this grow, and given the fact that they don't want it in town, they've been very clear for their zoning bylaws. I I think they put a lot of time in this. When it was suggested that they zone this out of town, they were presenting, they literally smirked. They had a ass-eating grin on their face because they knew dang well they'd done that, and that was intentional. And that is not in the spirit of of what the public voted for and what the state has set forth for us to do. To go along with that, this would be, if I voted for one as well, I would vote for this one. However, I won't vote favorable because of um, the setbacks are fine now, as I understand. But the acreage we need to come down, and I would like the special granting authority control of the zoning board gone before I'd support any of these.
Any further discussion?
To give someone hints for town floor.
Yes, sir.
I, well, first off, I want to thank you for what you just said, because I think everybody in this room knows that that second project you're talking about is my family's project. I I just want to make it clear to everyone and people at home who might be watching. From my personal perspective as a businessperson and as a guy who essentially just wants to farm a small part of my land, um, and make a good living for my family and maybe do some good things for the town, admittedly, it's a controversial project, but essentially, it's farming. That's really all I want to do. If a bylaw does not pass tomorrow, it's pretty likely that I'm out of business. And I know there's people in the room that disagree with that assessment, but the reason why is a bylaw gives me my use. The HCA does not give me an allowed use, and without an allowed use, the CCC will not entertain my license application. So I understand that just about nobody in this room likes what's been presented, but it's my hope that you can find a way to work really hard tomorrow to make whatever amendments and negotiations need to be made so that we can get something passed. And my second concern about not passing anything doesn't honestly have anything to do with my business. It has to do with how I look at this town as a citizen. And if we don't pass anything, you can forget about a moratorium. The state is not gonna certify that. And we're gonna have a town where technically marijuana is legal, and there's no rules to govern it, and we're gonna stand out like a sore thumb. And I respect your commitment as a board to protect the town with your CAs. But with no zoning in place to to govern the industry in this town, people are gonna come, and not the kind of people you want to come approaching it. And if you don't believe that, read the Boston Globe Spotlight Report, or ask my attorney, who got a random call from a real estate developer in Florida, who cold-called my attorney and said, I would like to get an HCA in Berry. Can you help me? And my attorney, who is a very principled guy, chuckled and said, no, I cannot. And I'm not making that up. I'll have my attorney call you and confirm that story tomorrow. And all of that works.
Daniel, sorry.
Um, so I guess two components here. First of all, um, I'm all for obviously another business in town. I guess maybe any way we could facilitate that tomorrow on the floor to make sure that um, Mr. Egan can move forward, because you guys have obviously spent a lot of time editing that email. It would be great. However, just to clarify, just to clarify, um, the the whole idea of no bylaw and becoming the Wild West is categorically incorrect. Because as you know, you cannot even apply to the cannabis control commission without an HCA. So, so they still control it. It will not become the Wild West. People will not be coming up from Florida buying land and putting marijuana. They've been doing so without a license, and then that would be an issue for Chief Carbo. So I think that's a dangerous thing to bring up on the floor, that it becomes the Wild West, because it doesn't. The state has made it very clear. It rests with the HCA. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, yeah, I would say we can agree to disagree to a certain extent. I understand what you're saying. But people are gonna come and try, and they're gonna cost this town time and weight and harassment. And you're right, they'll probably fail, but they're gonna try.
But it won't become the Wild West.
I think they'll try as well.
I think the first answer I respond to anybody at the moment, considering our current precedent, is, do you live in Berry? No? Hang up.
Yeah, that might work.
I would just leave it at that. Right now, that's our precedent. If a zoning bylaw can pass before we get to that, that buys us the time it takes to get a zoning bylaw in place that works.
And if somebody wanted to.
It only takes a year of hanging up.
If somebody wants to attempt to amend this bylaw, it's very simple. Cross out multiple sections. Multiple sections. Keep your definitions, keep the very basic rudimentary things that one might need to have a grow facility outdoors. Cross out everything else and propose it. And if that passes, then we have a bylaw that can be amended and added to in the future as we see fit. We don't need the whole kit and caboodle all at once. We need something on the books, I agree. But this needs to be stricken down and stripped down hugely to get a very basic law forward we can agree for and put a first step forward with. And we could add to it later. Keep the definitions. You know, keep some of the, you know, definitions of the grow and and maybe some of the setback things. Take everything out, gone. Take it out. Let the host agreement deal with it. Get the zoning established and let the host deal with it. And I would support that wholeheartedly. And then when we have a bylaw in place, which I said last year, let's get something in place and move forward later, um, we'd at least have something on the books, and something the state would probably approve because it would be rudimentary and simple. Um, and I will, after this, I intend to vote against a moratorium, as I voted against it last year and fought hard against it last year, but we still got it. I I don't want to be on the table for this.
Any further discussion on this particular Article twenty-nine? Yes, Scott?
I'm just confused. I'm sorry. So are you saying that on the floor to to basically do floor amendments?
Take take twenty-nine and modify the heck out of it.
Yeah.
Keep keep the definitions, keep the zoning aspect that says where it's gonna be for whatever part of it we like. Cross the rest of it off, and then delete sections blank, 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 blank. Done. We have a zoning bylaw.
And if you have the ability, please come with a well-prepared document that identifies all those changes.
Strip it to.
So when you turn around, you can hand it right to the town clerk to file. Otherwise, you're gonna spend an hour handwriting everything up. The confusion's gonna be a mess, and the moderator's just gonna push it off the floor.
And I say eliminate because.
So come prepared.
Rather than reread and rewrite, I'm going to eliminate sections blank, 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 which is going to leave this, this, and this. That's my motion. I've written it here. And if people choose to vote on that motion, I think we'll have something that will pass.
And that's fifty percent, right, for amendments on the floor?
Uh, fifty percent to amend, I believe, but the.
Yeah.
And then two-thirds to pass.
Two-thirds to pass, and I think that would get us our two-thirds. It would satisfy people, we have some laws in place. It would satisfy people who support, uh, you know, without getting everything. And and you you make it clear that this begins a non-controversial rule that will establish some some marijuana bylaws, zoning bylaws, and we would intend to add to these at each meeting in the future when we can come to agreement on what fits to add, and then we could put pieces back in later. But the host agreement has most of the things in it that they're asking for that we already cover. It's redundancy, and that is part of it that we don't like. Um, any language difference, there are several points of language difference between our agreement and what they're proposing in bylaws. If people are held to two standards and the same thing, that's gonna get at a court legally an issue in court that we're gonna lose on one side or the other altogether. Strip it down, in my opinion. Just an opinion.
Yes, Sam?
Those people supporting that opinion would need to come forward with with enough information for everybody in the hall, in the hall.
They need to be able to verbally describe the changes, but to be more effective, it would help with pre-written drafts typed out that they could pass out and say, this is something I'm gonna propose on the floor. It'll be easier to follow if you take this with you.
And that's why.
Is that what you're saying? Because otherwise, you're right. Everybody's trying to scribble and keep up with your notes and.
But striking instead of amending is better, too.
Yeah.
Is it actionable? What does that mean? Is Article twenty-nine actionable?
That's the last question, is my my concern whether or not it is actionable.
Yes, they did. The planning board voted, but had an unfavorable recommendation.
A hundred percent on that?
It provided a recommendation.
I believe I received a letter that said it was unfavorable.
That's that's a point that I said that we need. I think we needed a recommendation from them. We needed.
We just needed the recommendation, but whether it's favorable or not, I believe, didn't matter. They just needed to tell us what they thought.
So if they did express that opinion, that should finish the circuit in time, although I didn't like it being there before it was done. That should finish the circuit. If those things were done before the vote.
Just as, just as a point of clarification, it seems that the major differences between Articles twenty-seven and twenty-nine are basically the minimum lot sizes for indoor and outdoor, or for indoor cultivation, and the definition of residential programs versus residences. Those are the main two differences between the two.
And the swimming area?
And the s- and swimming areas. So three diff- so basically, three differences. I'd almost, I mean.
But that will open up many more properties.
Right, right, right. But my only, my my suggestion, can tell you guys to do it, I my.
Don't cut it all out.
I would say cut up twenty-seven versus cutting up twenty-nine. Because, and put in those provisions, because, I mean, the one for twenty-nine as being a citizen's petition, it still has it here that they're gonna use an olfacto meter for for testing odors.
I'd still take.
Provision is not included as part of that, which was included as part of the um, the planning boards to ensure that your project is is uh, kept, so.
No, Article twenty-nine didn't affect it, though, because it references eleven-point-two as an addition, not removing eleven-point-one.
But it does, no, here's the problem. In eleven-point, eleven-point-one, it says that eleven-point-one is eliminated the second that bylaws are passed, inclusive of all uh, amendments.
It doesn't say it's eliminated. It says the moratorium expires on such and such a date. That doesn't mean the bylaw is removed from the books.
Or when a bylaw is passed.
Again, the moratorium expires. The bylaw does not get removed. So paragraph D, which is part of that bylaw, is still written and still effective.
Right, but it's an amendment to the moratorium.
It's amendment to the bylaw, overall, not the title. Do you follow, do you see what I'm saying? It's the thing that calls out that it is exempt from future zoning bylaws that affect the industrial site based on the criteria that was written. Why does that go away just because the moratorium that prevents development expires? The bylaw doesn't expire. The moratorium within the bylaw expires. Yes, Scott?
So our attorney, Matt, agrees with you, um, our attorney. But just because of belts and suspenders, because we've had some questions come up from the planning board about this, and because it's been kind of a rough place to do business with in that regard, we would want to make a floor amendment to put that in if we're going with a different bylaw, just belts and suspenders to neutral.
The only other aspect is, if if you did try to modify twenty-seven instead of twenty-nine, would be that we're positive there'll be no question that this article will stand and not get challenged. And we're pretty sure twenty-nine won't, but we're not positive. Like you said, is it actionable? If somehow we found out it wasn't, we know this one is.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. We know for sure that's actionable. So if there's any, just just, I I think twenty-nine is. But air on the side of safety, it's just as easy to modify 27 instead of 29. And like I said, my recommendation, keeping the definitions.
I think you're missing the point here. You try to mess with Article 27, when it's all done, you're going to have very few modifications pass on the floor and they're going to move forward to pass it and they're not going to want to talk about Article 29.
Well, if the amendments get made to 27, they don't get to talk about Article 29.
Do you think you're going to win all those amendments? Before it goes to vote? Because now they're going to think they've debated everything that matters about the zoning bylaw-
No, it's one of them.
And they're going to pass what's presented. Do you think you're going to modify everything in Article 27 you disagree with? And then feel comfortable moving forward requesting a vote on that article? Versus Article 29, which you generally already have mostly in agreement with and you're talking about revising maybe two paragraphs? In other words, how confusing are you going to make it so that the people really understand what you meant? I'm just presenting, I don't, I understand what you're saying, Andrew, but I think it's actually going to be you're going to get a more stringent bylaw if you try to cut up Article 27 than just clarify Article 29.
Well, I still want to clarify, I still want to see the special permit granting authority gone from the planning board. So it's really excising that-
I actually mentioned that. I did not see, even though the representatives from the planning board in the previous meeting that the bylaw review committee had today. I had asked a question about where are your waivers or exemptions that a special permit granting authority relies on based on our bylaw that describes that that's the purpose of a special permit granting authority? I did not find exemption or waiver written in the entire bylaw, but they said it's there somewhere. So if they have nothing to waive or exempt, why are they a special permit granting authority? That's what the building commissioner does, which says, make sure you fit the zoning bylaw, give me all these documents. Once you do, done, check mark, move on. The planning board does not have to just say, did you fill out the checklist? And the bylaw apparently is written that way right now. I don't see anything written that allows them to waive anything in there. So what is the special permit granting authority for?
If somebody proposed building in their home-
And you can't make it generic, is what they said. You can't say, we have the right to waive whatever we see in here. You specifically have to call it up. And I did not see anything like that specifically called out in this revised bylaw that came through last week.
It shouldn't be a special permit. If it's permitted in the zoning, it's not a special permit.
So I've just hit a wall. I don't even know where to start with this. And that's, I apologize for my frustration. I would almost, and maybe it's because I'm on the Board of Selectmen and I was the one that proposed, well, we proposed a host community agreement. I would almost go up there and say, wipe out the entire thing and just say, outdoor cultivation is allowed in R80. One line paragraph, boom.
On their bylaw, on the planning board?
Yep. It doesn't matter which one.
Pick one. Pick one.
But we don't know if Article 29, I mean, we believe it's actionable, but it might not be.
Then we'll, then we'll vote on that after.
No, I think Article 29 is the one we got the letter from the planning board saying, we do not, we are not in favor of this.
But if somebody started with 27 and wiped it out and said, I want to amend it to read the following. Outdoor cultivation shall be permissible in R80 zoning.
I'm being very simple here. I'm just saying-
That covers that one issue. And then 29, we can try to cover the rest. That would be a very, I like that. Boy, I like that.
The only reason I'm bringing this up again is, I'm not saying leave the town wide open.
We're not.
You still have us as a, you know, gatekeeper. And you still have the special town meeting to try to clarify and work on it still. Clean this up. We are making progress. We're getting better. But there's still things, I look at this and I'm telling you, anybody please with the revised bylaw, zoning bylaw, if you find the exemptions that special permit granting authority had, send it my way as quick as you can. Because right now I don't see it. Which I think means we are technically putting something before the town. Almost lying to them. We're giving the planning board special permit granting authority, but they, if they ever actually tried to do anything, legally they're breaking the law. Because there's nothing in that that allows them to change anything that's there. They're just forcing somebody to come before the planning board for no reason, to give them a whole bunch of paperwork that they can now charge a consultant to talk about, get it back, realize that even though I got this, there's nothing I can do with it. But you've now got to pay for the services. And specifically, the CCC's job was to double-check these to make sure you're not making unnecessary expenses and effort on those applying to do business in your town. And I look at that and say, nothing in this bylaw explains anything about what you're going to go do with these third-party consultant reviews of your water plan, your traffic plan, your, all of these plans that they can pay a consultant to do and force the applicant to pay for through an escrow or a crown. There's nothing written in here that you can how are you going to deny it based on a consultant's, there's nothing in here that says you have to meet a certain level of competence or a certain you haven't specified anything that says that third-party consultant is warranted and the planning board can actually act on anything the consultant provides. So I'm just really confused about the intent of the special permit granting authority here and why the vagary. Maybe there's a point to it, but I don't understand it, and I'll admit that.
If they propose that they would like to grow marijuana in the R80, that would, as it sits, that would be when you'd need a special permit. You'd be asking to do something outside of the design use of the zone. That's what it's for. Once a bylaw is established, establishes zones where it's permissible, there's no more need for that authority, to simplify it. The special permit granting authority is to use something outside of the designated use. Once we've established use, there's no need for that authority. And if somebody wants to go outside the use, they're still going to have to petition them anyways, as is standardly done with anything in this town. Anyone in any zone that wants to do something outside of the use has to ask for a special permit. But if this was amended to say the outdoor cultivation is allowed in R80, we'd make use of a warrant slot and get something done towards marijuana bylaws, zoning, which is what this is about. It stays within the box. We're doing a marijuana zoning bylaw. And then we could use, someone might use one of the other two bylaws, like 29, to try to make a simple bylaw which is a little more encompassing of what we're after without getting everything in there now. And it gives us, like I said, the basic footprint to work on for definitions and such. And we can add to that later because it's something to build on in the future, but something we can agree on, which I think would be stripping it down to little more than definitions.
All right, we've had a very healthy debate. Go ahead, Fran.
Could you, you're proposing the new 1.11.2. Could you just repeat the language from yours?
What you just proposed, I believe about specific to just the R80.
It was just what the chairman here suggested, that if somebody wanted to make a modification to Article 27, they could suggest that they will strike the existing text completely and say that marijuana cultivation outdoor shall be permitted in R80 zone.
That would make it simple, wouldn't it?
You could even include some of the other box at the offsets. Because I'm coming from my own perspective. Our host community agreement, the guy said, I can follow everything that's been proposed. So whatever they say about outdoor recreation, you can keep all of that language in that bylaw. Now it isn't special permit granting authority, really. It's, I'll work within the box.
But since it's still a proposed zoning change for marijuana, it still fits the title on the warrant of marijuana zoning bylaw. It's just much less than they're proposing.
Do you think it would be approved by Attorney General?
Yes. Oh, yes. That would be very simple to approve. And then when you make another bylaw, now we don't have three conflicting bylaws. You could put a piece in each one or get rid of 28 and just take up 29. But now we make another bylaw, we don't have a conflicting bylaw. We have an additional zoning bylaw, which can also be modified to something very different than it is here. But once again, marijuana zoning bylaw, that's a title on the warrant, we're staying within the box. We're changing the definitions within it, but we're keeping it to the right task, very legal. And this would make two different bylaws that do not conflict, that both accomplish something separately instead of putting all the eggs in one basket. And that's the frustrating thing about these. It's everything all at once. There's no gift to say, all right, let's just start with here and we can agree on this, let's anyone that's done any kind of mediation, that's what you do. Let's start, what do we agree on? You find the piece you agree on, make that the bylaw to start with and go from there. Then we'll work on pieces, but they're not willing to do that. They're trying to put everything at once and I think that's where the problem's been with this. There's too many points you disagree on. This would be a healthy start, so I'd love to see changes tomorrow.
The, I guess the only, the only reason that was brought up, from my perspective, it had nothing to do with fighting every paragraph in what's being proposed. It's the fact that the variety of items and the variety of opinions about them may make it that nothing passes. And if we get close to that, I would rather literally strike everything just so we can let those that are already trying to move forward with the host community agreements, we get the language in that fits that. It could be a simple one-line paragraph that says, outdoor cultivation is allowed in R80. Or you could include the other outdoor cultivation offsets that still work. And in special town meeting, if you didn't like that, you can clean that up. Pull a few out, put a few in. Instead of 11.2, you go to 11.3 and you talk about retail. And 11.4, you talk about delivery. 11.5 is, it doesn't all have to be under 11.2.
And you would wonder if I made the Article 27.
We would like to support someone's amendment, yes. We don't want to make the amendment. Prefer not to.
If we back, I mean, this seems like a better simple solution. I kind of would hope that it would address my friends' concerns as well.
It certainly would, but I don't feel like I could make that motion.
But do you think before tomorrow night's meeting that you could meet with the planning board and the finance committee and have unanimous approval or follow?
We can meet and discuss. I believe
Isn't there a meeting?
We've had a hard time getting them to budge on anything that would be considered this open. But I definitely would like to still try. Even if we can just present the fact that you're not leaving the gates unmanned. But we've said that for a while now and people don't believe it. And I can't, that's all. You believe it or you don't, and I'm not going to convince someone to believe something they don't want to believe. I mean, shoot, at the special town meeting this last time, a planning board member stood up and outright told the members of the town that the Board of Selectmen will let people run roughshod over the town with the host community agreement. He represented the planning board and he stood in front of the town and he lied. Whether he meant to or not, he flat-out lied. And I bit the bullet that night because I didn't want to make it an argument on the floor. But I just felt like that was absolutely uncalled for. And it's still being said throughout the town from members of that planning board that they still agree with that.
I go one thing, this is the problem. He and you found me, not a special town meeting, we're in here.
Yeah, you should expect more people involved.
People may not know it from my stance in this, that I've certainly been favorable for Mr. Andoli's and Al Castle Rock's petitions. I am not a user of marijuana. I'm an advocate against it. I don't like it. I'll never use it. I won't buy it. But I believe my job as an elected official is to do what the public wants me to do and the vote's clear on that. So we're doing the best job we can to make sure this is done in a, you know, non-offensive, cooperative and beneficial manner to the town and to the people involved in this. It's not going to change me and make me suddenly use marijuana. It's not going to make anyone use marijuana that doesn't want it. But there's, the majority of people want it and that's going to be supported here. And I think zoning it out is, the zoning board's doing, the planning board is irresponsible. I have nothing against their businesses and I hope they succeed and do well with it. And there's certainly demand out there, as we've seen in Leicester with their cell facilities in Leicester, the demand's there. People want it.
Do you think it would be wise to have a motion to take Article 29 out of order? Suppose-
No.
You're talking about now or eliminate a lot of confusion?
I think-
Could you clarify, just to better understand what you mean by taking it out of order? Are you saying when 27 comes up, you make the motion to pull 29 up front?
Yes.
Okay.
Before the marijuana discussion starts or anything?
Okay.
I don't know. Let's, let's talk about that. I know it's going to be a long night and I planned for it because this is important.
I didn't plan for it, but I know it was going to happen anyway.
I'd like to think more on that. Is it smarter to pull 29 first or is it smarter to try to get, get this other agreement going and get this business going that we've approved? And set something up and take one step that people should be able to agree on. That for, in this town with all the farms, this should be coming more in the future. You know, we're going to see people want to have outdoor and-
My concern is, I still have no true understanding what the planning board's or citizens petition regarding Article 28 is. So there's still that third one out there waiting in the wings to see if they can bring it in at the very end and do whatever they're going to do with it. If it's possible, I feel the only right way to present this to the town is there's got to be discussion on all three without a vote on any of them. So everybody understands what's being presented. Otherwise, you're going to set up a vote, it's going to pass. Someone else is going to present something and everybody's going to be like, but I didn't know that was happening. And now they're going to vote on another one, it's going to pass. And then what's going to happen is the most stringent of every one of them applies. Lock them all up, nothing happens. And then they're all going to fail at the Attorney General's office. Because we truly met the, you zoned it out of town. How many, how many people in this room are aware of how many bylaws that we passed at town meeting that are still awaiting the Attorney General's approval? There's at least more than one, I'll tell you that. And at least two of them relate to marijuana. So I would suggest this. Just because something passes at town floor doesn't mean we get a bylaw. So the crazier you make it and the fact that we might actually have three bylaws passed that are all the same thing, you're going to walk away with no bylaw. I think what's really going to happen is the Attorney General's going to talk to someone and say, hey, before I flat-out deny you, can you get to special town meeting and clean this up so I don't have to worry about it again? In the meantime, we'll have no bylaw. Tom still will have no opportunity to move forward because despite we voted it, the state hasn't approved it. Because it's going to be stuck in limbo.
And that's why if one, if-
Given the option, I'm going to ask though, I don't even want to go there. I don't know how to present this to the planning board and the finance committee and try to see if we can actually come up with an appropriate process on the floor to deal with all three and have any agreement between the three boards. I don't know how to approach. I would like to.
Clearly, we'll have to make a statement before these articles or have the moderator make a statement before these articles. And I think we have every right to as the selectmen that make the warrant. I believe we can stop and have a statement prior to these three. We'll have to check with the moderator, make sure we can, or he could do it and briefly explain.
We've got to ask and if he's willing to operate, it'll happen.
Briefly explain what's going on with the three. And if anybody does intend to put a petition such as that forward, a very simple one, that would easily pass and be passed by the state, it'd be nice for us to know that ahead of time so that it can be explained to the town that there's probably going to be such a petition made, which would allow us to use one of these three bylaws, the one that we find the most restrictive and unlikely to pass the state, to be used for something constructive. And then of the remaining two, we can explain- And then of the remaining two, we can explain the basic differences between them. And that we also believe there's a motion to modify that, to streamline it, to get something started for a bylaw that can be amended in the future, rather than try to do everything at once. There's too many pieces that are offensive to too many different people that just... Somebody wants to get rid of Section 1, somebody for 2, somebody for 3B. There's too many things that get picked apart that it's just not likely to pass. Hopefully, we get some sort of clarification with the moderator. And hopefully, we have someone present us with something to say they want to put a motion forward so we have something to bring the moderator to enlighten the town, because that would make this go, I think, a lot to move.
If it's okay, I really want to move this to a vote. I'm calling for a vote on whether we are favorable for Article 29.
Nay.
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 Article 30, Moratorium on Marijuana Establishments. I am making a motion as to whether you are favorable for the Article 30.
Second the motion for favorable vote.
Any further discussion? The only thing I'll say is, my understanding is this is one of the pending bylaws that still have not been approved by the Attorney General the last time.
Yes, and there's no way in heck they're going to approve another one.
Which if anybody knew, I think actually puts us in limbo and means we do not have a moratorium in place now. And if you've not seen how wide-open the town has been and roughshod by all the marijuana developers...
Hey, we've doubled the permits, come on.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, it hasn't happened. But based on my understanding, state wouldn't approve it anyway. So unless somebody's got something more to say, I'm calling for a vote.
Nay.
Nay. Article 31, amend the code of the Town of Berry Solar Energy Facilities. If anybody's interested, the Board of... Well, the Finance Committee voted in favor, six to nothing, on the Solar Energy Facilities bylaw. Article 31, that is. Which my understanding, something about if Article 31 passes, then Article 32 is not necessary.
Article 32 would be... Is going to be bypassed here regardless. That was basically submitted by citizens petition, but actually submitted the bylaw as worded currently. Because it's a misunderstanding as far as what can be done after a citizen's petition was submitted.
Okay. Good enough. So, Article 31. Make a motion to vote in favor of Article 31. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Yes.
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 Article 32. Amend the code of the Town of Berry Solar Energy Facilities. The Finance Committee was
32 is being stricken?
Unfavorable, five to nothing. If you have any thoughts or comments, now's the time. Can I make the motion or did I jump to discussion? Article 32. Alright, I make a motion to vote favorable for Article 32. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, the vote is, are you voting favorable for Article 32? I call for vote.
Nay.
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 Article 33. This is a citizens petition also? Or just a request by the?
This was a request by the property.
Yeah, alright. Article 33, amend the code of Town of Berry, zoning change to Business Commercial District. Make a motion to vote favor. The map's wrong?
The wording is correct, but this is the wrong map. This was an early map that was presented to the planning board, and then they recommended we add on to the code as whole. So this map is a whole map.
Can we have the newer map possibly printed out with the recommendations and just
Yeah, begin.
On the floor, it can be referenced just to say, "Hey, please see the other map." Thank you. So, any further discussion?
Article number one.
Did it get seconded? Who's seconding? Article 33.
When we did 32, we skipped, we said no, we said no.
You said no with 32.
Okay, I'm just, I'm one behind in my scoring here, so... Okay. Second the motion for the vote.
Yep. Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Article 34. Make a motion to amend the code of Town of Berry, zoning change to B.C. District. This is another Higgins property or parcel located abutting the same properties.
Make a motion to take a favorable vote in this article?
I'll second that. Gotcha, Sandy.
Oh, he didn't start that one, so I was kicking and going while he started looking at it. We know what it is. I don't think there's any discussion on the floor, so it could go quick.
Is there discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Article 35. Another property owner making a request to change their zone, and this one is to change to an R-80 district. Make a motion to vote favorable for Article 35.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Article 36. Citizens petition submitted for a resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. Make a motion to vote favorable for Article 36.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Nay.
Nay.
Abstain.
Good enough.
And to clarify, I feel that this is a maybe a symbol of some sort of a cultural shift, and I don't feel comfortable telling the town what they should believe about it.
Good point. Neither do I, but I'm unfavorable on it, and that's my opinion, so... If they want to know my opinion, I just give it to them. But make that a statement on the floor, that's the time to say it. Here's why I'm unfavorable.
That is all the articles.
That way people wonder.
If anybody's bored, you can listen to us talk about line item transfers.
Oh, boy, we do more?
Yes, sir, Fran.
Article 10.
Yes, Article 10. What are we going to, Andrew? Article 10. Somewhere in the book.
In the book, 10.
It's either reference here or in the front page. Where do they identify the money on that?
No, it says, save the down, pay the appropriate borrow, etc. Twenty-seven thousand.
Ah, the narrative versus the numbers don't match. So, Article 10, twenty-seven thousand dollars is the words and forty thousand something is the numbers.
Forty thousand. Yeah.
Motion on the floor to clean that up.
Yep, that'll have to be annotated and handed to the moderator.
Thank you for calling that out, save us a little moment, maybe.
Good eye.
Well, the motion on the floor would still be forty-seven thousand, this is
But they have to read it this way and get handed in this way.
It depends on how they read the motion to start with, because this is just a narrative, right?
The motion might say exactly this.
No, I'm asking, from your experience, this is
I know, make sure it doesn't say... Make sure it doesn't have the language that way in it.
But you don't want to just say the motion differently than this is presented. You want to call out to the people, your booklet's
It's forty thousand eight seventy-three is the correct for the So removal over
The words are printed. Printed words.
It was originally twenty-seven thousand, that's actually one of your action items for tonight.
Right.
Further approve the snow and ice deficit.
Where do we dump all of those?
Now, in special town meeting in the fall, which often happens to us in this.
Where did I bury them? In a pile here somewhere. There, there's my pile. Thank you very much, Fran, for your input tonight.
To the beginning.
I got you. Not when it's all about commercial revenue versus using it on-site to offset your own... Because that one's state law, kind of, can't, you can't stop, but...
State law, forget it. Withdraw from the union. Right to Sullivan, no Sullivan, withdraw.
I don't know about that, but we might be doing better with the schools that way.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay, so, let's move on to the transfer funds. Get your department heads to actually sign these things. Every form they send, wage authorizations, sign them. I'm tired of seeing things unsigned that we're signing ahead of the person that supposedly is requesting it.
This sounds like our special event permits. We're in the beginning, will you straighten those out? How many times do they come in with nothing signed off, asking for the permits?
Just because it's interdepartmental, it's not from the department. That's why I require
So, what do you got? Six?
Do we need to address them individually?
Five.
Relatively small amounts, just to cover some
So, we're going from county retirement to selectman expenses, five hundred dollars, leaving a balance of two fifty-nine, or leaving a balance of seven fifty-nine?
Uh, there's actually two for five, it'll be seventeen fifty-nine after both, or one of them was an early request, so it's a realization, it was a little light on the first request.
So you're moving a total of a thousand dollars over?
Right.
So this is the first request, the balance of seven fifty-nine. At this point, the second request is five fifty-three, it's going to bolster us to fifteen sixty-three?
Yes.
I'm confused. How can county retirement
Have a surplus? We overbudgeted.
Show a balance... Or maybe I need a better... Line four on each one, current balance and the requested line item. Is that requested from or requested to?
Requested to.
We're putting into the select board expense, because we've run it down to five sixty-three right now.
Go into the negative if we left it at its current level. Trying to get ahead.
I guess what I'm saying is we're still going to be sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents over as of the June thirteenth request. You're asking for five hundred, but you have a balance of five hundred sixty-three twenty-nine. So you're not resolving the deficit.
For which one is that?
The June thirteenth. County Retirement to Select Board Expenses. This is after the May. So it's the latest balance.
Right.
They've made two requests of five hundred each, that should be
The second one wasn't posted yet because it didn't have the select board's approval. So I had already gotten the Finance Committee's approval before getting it back to you, the second Finance Committee meeting. So that, that balance number, we'd only drawn it down another two hundred dollars before then. So it's a total combination of a thousand dollars or pulling just as two separate requests, because it went for the Finance Committee two different times.
Okay, so after all of this, you're going to come back to One thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents as your current balance after today's approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion to accept the two requests, one dated May twenty-third and one dated June thirteenth.
Thirteenth and sixth, don't they?
There are several that are May twenty-third.
Oh, we're looking here, okay, I'm looking at the received date.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the date, May twenty-third, June thirteenth, County Retirement to Select Board Expenses.
Right.
Gotcha.
The combination of those two are moving a total of a thousand dollars across.
Second the motion to transfer the funds. They received June sixth and June thirteenth.
Okay, May twenty-third, June thirteenth.
Yep. Both of them are County Retirement to Select Board Expenses.
Five hundred each for a total of a thousand.
So you've motioned?
I second.
Motion to accept the May twenty-third and June thirteenth, two thousand nine, request for transfer of funds, totaling a movement of one thousand dollars from County Retirement to Select Board Expenses.
My second.
Any further discussion, or did you second that, right? Okay, any further discussion? Alright, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Is there a spot where Board of Selectmen should be signing this?
Uh, you could just sign right above Finance, maybe this is some form that I came up with a couple months ago.
Is it me signing as a member of the board for this?
Yeah, as the chairman.
I'll just do it like you said, just below.
Trying to evolve a way to make requests a little bit more streamlined and realize the more you add to it, the more confusing it's making it, so... I'm sure the next time you see one of these forms, it'll probably look even different.
What is today's date?
Today is the seventeenth.
Thank you.
Can we shut the air off?
Yeah, sorry.
It's cold, isn't it?
Should this go, which, the signed ones, to you or to Andrew? Okay, three separate individual ones. Make a motion to approve the May twenty-third request for transfer of funds, moving five thousand dollars from County Retirement to police overtime.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, make a motion to approve the May twenty-third request for transfer of funds, moving six thousand seven hundred dollars from County Retirement to Veterans Benefits.
Second.
My secret, ow!
Oh, that's not
Not enough water, I'm dying!
Alright, alright, I'll get through it. Alright. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, make a motion to approve the June thirteenth request for transfer of funds, moving seven hundred dollars from the Reserve Fund to the Town Report Fund.
Second.
Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Dude, I was looking at the appointments and who is or isn't being reappointed. Looks like you did all right on some, but I thought. Maybe she took it back, but. Is Colleen still on the nine eleven committee? I thought she was one of the ones that left.
She's not.
Colleen left.
She provided a resignation letter. Which opened the window for Scott Tortolet, if I'm correct.
Can I ask what the coloration indicates on this?
Green is that they've submitted a letter saying that they are interested in continuing. Red is that they've submitted saying that they wish to not be reappointed.
And the highlighter is just green.
It was just, I missed one.
Okay. All right.
We're printing them all out again.
No, no, just asking.
I am fine with, if you guys are fine with, looking at blanket motion to reappoint all of the members that are indicated as green or have currently no indication. And they can come back and actually officially resign otherwise. So I think it, my guess is you reached out to someone, you didn't get a response, so you just left it unmarked.
Right, we sent the blanket letter to each, to each person and basically with a, do you wish to be reappointed or do you wish to not be reappointed? The ones that are colored are the ones that we got back. If they're, if they're not colored, then we didn't get a response back. But at the marijuana, the marijuana bylaw committees, obviously that was always supposed to go to town meetings, so we didn't.
All right. But I would like to do before actually finishing that is, I'd like to reference the term ending June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Annual appointee list. By amending Colin Gerton and identifying that as someone who has previously resigned or requested resignation from the board. I'd like to make a motion for all of those that are identified as green, who have indicated a preference to stay on the boards or committees they're assigned to or appointed to. And all of those that have not responded to be reappointed for another year or another term, depending on how their committee is built.
Pending their acceptance.
For the ones that are not highlighted.
Sure. Yeah, it's, that's a good point. Just as easy to say it that way.
Say that again?
I just said pending the acceptance for the people that have not responded yet. So we're gonna reappoint pending their acceptance of the position. I don't think we could just say they're there if they don't want it.
Yeah, cause I may get them tomorrow.
But it's, you know. It may be a useless statement, it may help us, I don't know.
Actually, I would like to modify that rather than pending their acceptance.
Upon their request?
Their response is required. Or they're removed from the appointment for non-communication and therefore not fulfilling their role. We'll give them sixty days to respond and confirm the appointment.
What if you would draw the motion and say, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the people that have.
Confirmed.
Highlighted, agreed, that have confirmed they would like the position. And we will approve the other members pending their request within sixty days to be appointed.
Yes, otherwise it's open again and we need to start letting the town know how many.
They're approved pending their request to be approved within the next sixty days. I have to reword it.
I'll help you send. Let's start with this. Strike all motions regarding this agenda item. And we're gonna start fresh.
Be quick.
Make a motion to approve all of the appointees who have responded indicating they would like to maintain their position on their committees or boards that they have been assigned.
And further?
No, I was gonna make a separate motion for each of them.
Oh, sure, okay, that'd be good.
Like to maintain.
Second the motion.
Okay. Those who have responded stating that.
To approve all appointees stating they'd like to maintain on the.
The appointment identified in this list.
The grains. Need a voice to text computer, so she can just talk to it.
Well, we were discussing that today.
But it's, but she's gotta have a microphone for just her, cause it's gonna take everything in this room.
There's a program out there that'll record everything you're saying, it transcribes.
Dragon. I wrote my undergraduate thesis with.
Did you?
I did. It takes a while, you have to read a book to it after.
Yeah, but that's okay, cause then I can take out the important parts, cause everything's there.
Exactly, and if you adjust it well enough, it'll even sort out the ums and ahs, which was very.
Oh, I'm gonna call you and I'm ready to look at the odds. I like that idea. Obviously anything. Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
To, uh, the appoint. Point, okay, wait a minute. That motion to approve all appointed stating they'd like to maintain. I lost you at that point. Gonna say it again.
They're patient positions.
The motion to approve all the appointed.
Appointees.
Peas.
That have responded indicating they want to maintain the position they have.
As of today.
Do you have a second?
You have a second?
Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Second motion. Do we need that a motion or is it just more of a statement to the public?
It's a statement. You haven't appointed me.
Oh wait, no, I'll make a motion that for all of those that have not responded. Identified as white in the documents presented before us. If they do not respond to the town administrator's request on behalf of the board of selectmen. Within sixty days, they will be removed from the board of committee and have to reapply. And we will advertise those positions to the public as open positions on the committees. In other words, if you wanna be on this, you're gonna answer, you're gonna talk to us, can't just disappear.
Can advertise the open position?
Yes. Thank you. Do we have a second?
That leaves us, so we have to still appoint them all as they come in.
Yep.
Okay. I thought the intent was to.
I think I would make the motion so difficult to write down in word if I added those pieces in. We can bring that up when they come back and say so.
I'll second your motion.
I hear what you're saying Greg, but I was like.
I would've just.
I would've had exemptions and paragraphs and articles I'm referencing in this motion and I just.
Way cleaner, but.
Or alternative.
You probably would've, I just.
It's done. I was watching right, that's why I didn't speak up. I second the motion. It's, it's done.
We could, but I.
It gets it done. It's done.
We could strike them as they come in. If we just tabled this, just kept it as full business for future meetings.
Right, but what I'm trying to get the vote on is that if they don't respond in sixty days, they are removed.
Lighting fire.
Yes, in other words, stay in communication with those that appointed you.
They got the.
Or, we've had some boards that it looks like you got four people on it and then one day we go to ask the board and nobody's around. And then we realize we don't have anybody on the board. But they say it on the books for years because we weren't in communication saying, do you still wanna be on it? Or you, or we didn't ask them to do something.
I would've made the motion to reappoint the remaining people as long as they request that appointment within sixty days, otherwise they terminated or postposition.
See, you're right, that would've been a good motion.
Cause it gets everything. It gets them all done and appointed if they ask. We don't have to revisit it. Cause I didn't wanna revisit this.
But because she's written it, I really suggest we just go with what I did.
I already seconded it. I already seconded it.
Okay, but I was just allowing the discussion. I call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna go to Andrew and say whatever.
Is there anything else on the agenda I, we have to address tonight that?
Four motion on the go.
And let's tell Rob Rogowski, don't throw in a couple little random agenda items Monday morning.
The day before a town meeting.
Kind of. My whole goal was not even to have to do these warrant reviews tonight so that we could've done a quick administrative and then run into tomorrow. But it didn't work out.
Best laid plans.
Eh, good point.
A lack thereof.
I don't know of anything else. If you're interested, you can re correspond to, you can save that to the next meeting.
Press it.
Anything we have to do with this? An executive session? Nothing?
That's just prior.
FYI, okay. Just making sure it's not something we're covering. And we have to respond to that appointment we got to?
Is it their job to make that move or make that recommendation?
Let's handle that after.
Okay, let's clarify that. Cause my understanding, they've already come to me and.
I thought we appointed.
Previously on the board, they asked us to make an appointment based on their recommendation.
That's primarily what they're asking. But we can take that up on it.
Good enough. And I'm not trying to make, that's fine. I'm probably not gonna recommend anything different than what they're asking. I'm not trying to. Add fuel to the fire. That's not what I meant. Anybody else have any other questions? Any thoughts? Anything that needs to be discussed this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Quickly, I'm reading the letter we got from last time regards to the search committee for a library. Position.
Oh, the email follow-ups.
That was, yeah, that. Seems it was harshly written and confrontational, which I didn't like. And if that is the fact, I don't know it is, we'll have to research. I won't take him at.
It is. I read Mass General Law, found the reference.
Okay, and they still have to understand that we have to approve the pay for that position. So if it's not, if they, not something we don't approve of, we don't have to award pay for that position. I don't believe.
There is a wage authorization process, so I don't know how that works.
So would've been nice, be nice to basically include in the decision and participate in it because we have to approve the wage for it. It's just something I wanted to discuss. I, that it was very strange how they went about it. We weren't intending to do anything other than we normally do our procedures. If that's a fact.
I had to follow up with them and I kind of expressed a similar thing. Hey, it wasn't our intent to like tread on your turf. We were trying to just openly discuss how would we do this and our understanding was, like any other department, this is how we're doing.
And we debated exactly that.
After that, he did respond and he seemed to come off as if he was like. If I had just realized, I wouldn't have left earlier, cause we were doing the BLA agreement.
Right.
He would've stuck around and he would've been able to clarify it, so it didn't.
Go where?
And so it sounded like he was more amenable is all I mean, is like, I got you. I realized nobody's trying to walk on our turf or push us around. I do believe at times people. Until they get to talk to you, generally think you're trying to walk on them before they realize it was just a mistake or misunderstanding.
I'd like to think that I was very clear for the first year that one of my goals for us as a board is to release some of the controls the old board claimed and things that I thought were inappropriate. As far as hiring positions, we've, we clearly want the department heads to sit with the administrator and hire somebody and we just, you know, approve the wage authorization afterwards. They said that with the police, with the fire, with, with every department head and it's frustrating to see that people still think we're doing otherwise. I feel that this board, like people ask, well, I haven't gone to more of the planning board meetings or, or other things about their marijuana. And I think that when we're there, it interferes with those other elected boards to do their job. It's not our place to meddle on a regular basis in those things. Sometimes they ask us to be there, we should be there. But I, I think our duties are, you know, pretty well defined as selectmen and it's about the budget and the bylaws and regulating those things. I don't like it when we overreach and I don't like when people think we're overreaching, cause we're not trying to. And examples of school discussion tonight, I wasn't trying to tell the school to spend money. Trying to clarify that this budget is ours and every other town is told how much they can do and that they take it and do whatever they want with it. That's clear. And just trying to express that the percentage is a different, not an attempt to tell them how to spend it. Never have.
Gotcha. And I'm hoping that, yeah, I think he understands that. And I'm glad you had to, you can voice it here, so either way, it's out there. We're, we're letting people know.
And once again, the opinions I expressed tonight have been brought to me by dozens of people. People that agree with it and, you know, it's gonna be expressed and other people will hear, lots of people just heard tonight that they agree with that sentiment. And lots of people said, whoa, I don't like that. Maybe we bring more people to the meeting, we'll get a better collection of, of people there for it if they know this is gonna be contesting about it.
And I agree with that. Discussion is important.
I've always wanted more people at a town meeting. To control these things.
Just wanna say I've gotten a couple emails from folks complaining, complaining, saying that they are unhappy with the current condition of the bandstand.
Yes.
On the comment. So I mentioned to Andrew, just want that to be in the record so we can look at that coming down.
What's the progress? Last I heard, there was some common oversight committee that was still trying to de-scope.
Basically trying to. Figure out what really needs to be done. I know at some point, we're gonna have to really have a discussion about the financing and how we wanna attack that. One of my primary concerns in looking at it is whether or not it's actually too far gone to throw, you know, money at it without going back, you know, starting from scratch on it. Just because of, we're really talking about the condition of the cement or the concrete that's, that's holding it together. And if it's really gonna be an issue with, with trying to patch that because we see the stairs crumbling. Lots of cracks in the foundation. Do we wanna throw in a lot of money into the wood and bandstand portion of it if it doesn't have a solid footing on it? Same time, we have to try to address ADA issues if we're dumping that much money into it.
Have we spent any money in the last three years on that?
I doubt it.
Not in the last three.
And you've got to exceed what, thirty percent of its assessed value before you're required to make ADA upgrades? So find that dollar value and do what you can with that value.
If, like you said.
I'm just suggesting that's the approach.
Right, and I'm just.
Crack seal.
Historic value to this? How old is this? Cause that's gonna make a big difference whether we tear down or repair.
There's a plaque on it.
Yeah.
Gotta read the plaque to figure out what it's, I forget what the plaque says, but I know someone called it out.
I keep saying I gotta go look at it, I gotta go look at it. I'll give you a better informed opinion.
I look at it.
Yeah, well, my look at it's a little different thing. It's what I do.
It's what I do.
General construction?
Something does come to mind, not to.
Ten million dollar project.
Of a general construction, I mean.
Renovation complete.
Salvageable.
It started there, then I moved up to a million dollar jobs. I do similar. I do it in a different way and I understand that. I come from a different perspective, so I'm not saying I do what you do. I'm just in the industry is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it originally started off at around a fifty thou, or about forty thousand dollar scope, but then's when we really started drawing into some of the issues with somebody who actually had more of a construction. Or the actual trades on it was quickly escalating to eighty plus, so using that, it was kind of the garden we're at. That benchmark of probably what's thirty percent of the value.
Problem is, when you, when you're doing something for municipality and you have to use prevailing wages, you, you take a project and triple the price. So if they're up at eighty, you know, divide that by three and that'll be a contract this price on it. Once they have to pay all the guys stupid money to do it. You, you've got someone that's earning twenty dollars an hour and now you're gonna pay them sixty. Are they gonna work faster? Are they gonna take their time and drag it out? So it more than triples when, when you go prevailing wage and that's just a downside to how the government does things.
That's unfortunate. A lot of workers get.
You could probably call Reed's Fairy Shed and order one just like that for twenty thousand bucks and if it dropped off brand new, it might be something considered.
Oh, you wouldn't have that type of fieldstone foundation?
Well, you have to make your own foundation, so you'd have to get the foundation, but you could probably order. Well, you have to make your own foundation, so you'd have to get the foundation, but you could probably order the top portion with what you want from a company like that, that you hear them advertise all the time. Hey, give us a price, what would you charge us to build this and drop it here? And that's a private company, it's just gonna give you number to drop off the finished product. They're not charging labor, they're dropping off our product. And if we look for prices for, for that, we, we might, um, get something that we can live with. A nice product built very well from far less money, then, then once that's lifted up and gone, you can repair the foundation or pour our foundation or do a fieldstone, whatever you want, you can do a fieldstone again. I'm sure there's plenty of people that still do that trade, that would, you know, that's not gonna be outrageous. So, I mean, the footing's good under it, which, once again, we don't know the status of that. If it doesn't have a good footing, we could dig it and pour it, it's still not a big expense that DPW could dig it, and if one company would pour it. So we can, we can save on that side of it.
But there's a lot to it.
Yeah, that's just at least where I'm at as far as concerned, so I just don't wanna operate in vacuum on either.
The only thing I would really suggest is find out how much. Put a coat on the deck, the concrete deck, seal it. And I don't care if somebody just does, I don't care, but somehow cover the bulkhead. The goal here is get the moisture from ro, going straight into the basement. If you can get that down to five thousand, ten thousand dollars, that's securing that foundation for a while, so we can continue to move forward at funding other things, and we don't have to worry about the ADA upgrade. I would suggest let's look for that. Do what you can to reduce the amount of damage that's continuing, and then just stop. To give us time to figure out funding, and whether we can work with historical and the common committee and all the other people to say, this is how we have to move forward. We're gonna have to either do ADA compliance, or we're only touching this thing once every four years, and you're only gonna get slow incremental upgrades.
The floorboard, concrete floor is all it is?
Yeah.
Just cracks right through it?
There's a handful of cracks.
Yeah, there's.
Not enough to say it's gonna crush, it's just it's letting water through.
Could someone grind them out, pour some hydraulic cement in there?
We had a quote for that, and then apparently the contractor died or disappeared.
Well, we decided not to move forward with the price, because it was, it was the general contractor's price.
Okay.
With the, with subcontractor.
I misunderstood. I, I actually thought the guy that was gonna do it had a major health issue died, I'm sorry.
That might've been, that might've been.
This was prior to you, though, that.
Yeah, I was just saying the most recent.
That's a repair, what, what if we, just a second, what if we ask that kind of repair to be done with the DPW, and we put budget money to buy the materials for it? Our workers in the DPW are certainly qualified, and DPW superintendent has a construction supervisor license. He's certainly qualified to, um, run a grinder down the cracks and widen them, pour hydraulic cement in there in liquid form that will expand and of course, and make a seal. And then pour a coat of leveling cement over it, which would form an eighth of an inch film and a nice smooth surface to finish. That would take them an afternoon.
And the stairs would have to be repoured as well.
It's a painted surface, they'd have to completely strip the surface before they put the leveler on it.
The concrete, it's, it, it could be as simple as, um, a paint stripper or a power washer for that.
I'm just suggesting, it adds up, to do it right, it's more than a day.
There's still things we could.
It's gotta dry before you apply.
But if we utilize, if we did utilize town employees for that, our expense on it stays very, you know, there's no reason we, we couldn't do it.
Yes, there is. The reason is, our own personnel haven't been able to do the sidewalks down on Main Street, because we don't have time. We're asking too much of them.
That is our challenge in time.
Now, if we could get the DPW commission or DPW members to tell the DPW commission, you give me two more guys full time, I can do this other stuff.
Or summer help, at least more, different summer help.
But that's all I'm saying. We need someone to request it, if they think they can manage it and it would be useful, but until then, they can't do it. Not because they don't have the skill set, it's cause they don't have the time.
Maybe we need to have a discussion at the next meeting down there about possibly adding an employee down there for, cause you're right, the sidewalks have been waiting, and granted, there's reason for it. People get upset, but the weather's certainly a factor. We had so many washouts with rain last year. And then the, the breaks we had in water and sewer last year, I mean, a lot of these side projects take away from the planned projects. And then with the bridge getting repaired, that helped with the chapter nine fund, it took more time away, and we lost our time to do the roads. And there's been a snowball effect of why things have happened.
Yeah.
But maybe it does require, um, a limited term employee, um, to catch up on things. Putting someone on the books for a six month term, a defined term, um, higher rather than an employee, a full-time employee.
You can do it temporary, if you define it properly. You might not get anybody, because they know it's temporary, but you might get someone, you're right.
You might. Um, it's worth, it's worth a shot, and it depends how skilled he wants it to have to be to, to be effective.
You had something to add to the conversation?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, put on my economic development hat for a second, so I'm not here as a resident, just as someone who works for the town doing economic development. I've had, uh, in the region, I've had a couple of actors, potential cannabis actors, coming to call me, thankfully. And they've asked me to kinda parse out which avenues, what areas would be the most amenable to that particular project. And after describing the landscapes to all the actors that came to me, the one that caused the most complaints was Berry. Not because of any decisions that have been made, it was the absence of decisions that have been made. They didn't know the landscape, they didn't know the guardrails that were put in place. That up in the air quality of Berry is really what's detracted and caused some of these actors to not even come before to even begin negotiating with HCA. So I don't know what we've missed out on that particular end, but it's not nothing. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, that regardless of how this town meeting goes, something, anything needs to be passed. That way, at least, the, the ground is known, the landscape is known, and then the actors that want to come here can navigate that as they will. But they need to have some sort of roadmap.
Hopefully that's what we portray tonight. Hopefully we portrayed that well tonight, cause that was, I think, our intent of our discussion.
And I'm optimistic with the way that the previous bylaw failed, that's such a razor thin margin, with the annual town meeting being largely better represented. I think that sixty forty nature of the core, of the, uh, of the referendum here, I think that trend is gonna bear out. So I think that, that margin might be slimmer, um, if I were to forecast it, but not going by.
You do the, the margin with one vote.
One vote, I, I have.
Can't be any slimmer than that.
Plus, we barely made the floor, right?
You get the idea, though, but I think that it's gonna give or give us a healthier representation of that sixty forty nature. So my optimism is counterbalanced with some data behind it. I don't do fly-by-night optimism. But if we could mobilize as many people as we can, I think that would bode well for getting something passed. Cause this whole up in the air quality is causing a serious strain on not just people wanting to operate in Berry, but it's causing tension amongst people as well. So as long as we get some finality in some way, I think that would be better than leaving into the air or open.
This is why we recommended some simple amendments that, that might pass by as, as pieces rather than the, the whole, the whole bucket, it's just.
Yeah, I'm with you, I like that approach.
It's just hard to get a consensus that's gonna work well.
Exactly, and with such a contentious issue, getting a two-thirds majority on a sixty forty issue, that six percent hedging in the middle, that was a, that was a tough, tough thing to chew off. But coming with the economic development hat on, we need to have something, cause I don't know what we might potentially already missed out on.
I agree.
I think.
None of them were Berry actors, they don't front people.
If what has been presented to the down to date had passed, we still would've had nobody coming in.
Well, I've had a couple of folks come to me and had to direct them in other places, um, other places within my service area. We had a couple sent to Hardwick, that kinda went on deaf ears. You know, I've had, I've tried to spread them around in places I think they would fare best.
I'm just saying that.
They're so restrictive.
Any of the bylaws, right now, if they passed.
Still don't.
Nobody would still come to Berry.
They're too restrictive.
Yeah, they are very, they are.
And the planning board seems to.
I mean, why? You know, how can you convince them to come here with what we put in that zoning bylaw?
I, I understand, and I'm with you.
So, something isn't better than nothing.
Just, like I said, only.
It just means restriction is locked in now, versus, nothing means, once again, no moratorium means, come on in, we're open for business, but we're gonna do it on a case-by-case basis through the host community agreement.
I'm just talking from the folks that are coming.
Oh, no, no, and I appreciate the input, I'm just trying to explain that the reason I have a hard time with the argument of something's better than nothing is, once it's on the books, how many laws do you know get removed? They just add another one, and add another one, and add another one.
I do appreciate the approach that you recommended, starting with something simple and then tacking on.
Where can we agree to start?
And I would like that.
I think that would probably be a better approach, if it's within my boundary to say. I think that would work. Um, just going by the folks that come across my desk, the uncertainty is an automatic now versus the onerous bylaw, which is just a very likely no.
Yeah.
They have to put a lot of time and money into it, just to get to this point. And yes, and if you, there's no certainty of your outcome, why would you invest money and time into it?
Exactly, can't be.
Don't blame them at all.
When you look at the history, the certainty is, there will be no zoning bylaws. History is, we can't vote one in.
We have a house agreement, the guy can't take action.
That's my entire piece I wanted to say. Just letting you know from where I'm at in the field, who's on the ground, that's what I'm counting on.
That's what we've anticipated, and that's why I'm frustrated with it.
If we're okay with it, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Does Andrew have anything for us first, or? Second? Or he's seconding?
He's seconding.
Call for vote.
Aye.
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 All right, Andrew, you are gonna let Sandy take a three-hour nap somehow tomorrow?